I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:01 PM. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Pasqua.
Here.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Here.
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Here.
Councilmember Copley.
Here.
Vice President Verducci.
Here.
President Lima.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. In the event of an emergency this evening, those present in council chambers can exit outdoors labeled one or two in the back of the room to the back parking lot or front lawn of Town Hall. We'll move now to public comment on docketed items only. This is for public comment on those items that are on our agenda this evening. We'll first go to council chambers. Please come forward to the podium and make sure the mic's turned on and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Halas, 35 Chandler Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island. I'm here tonight because there is growing concern among residents about the performance of the Department of Public Works specifically regarding snow removal and trash collection. These are basic essential services that our community relies on, and frankly, the execution has been unacceptable. We all understand that storms and unforeseen circumstances can create challenges, but we have seen isn't just bad weather or tough conditions. It's about poor management and lack of accountability. If this is a budget issue, then let's see the numbers and discuss solutions. But if it's not a budget issue, then we have a management problem, and that's something that needs to be addressed immediately. Our taxpayers deserve to know why roads are left untreated for extended periods after snowfall and why trash is left at curbs well past scheduled pickup times. Accountability starts at the top of DPW leadership, isn't ensuring resources that are effectively and crews are doing their jobs efficiently. Then it's time for action. We need clear policies, better oversight, and a commitment to service that reflects the needs of the residents of Coventry. I urge this council, the solicitor, and the town manager to take this issue seriously. We need answers, and more importantly, we need to see results. The people of this town deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halas. Others in chambers, come forward, turn the microphone on, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Tom Pendergast, 6 White Rock Road, Coventry, Rhode Island. I am referring to Section 8A, which is Resolution 202508. Brief comments. So the Upper Dam Pond Conservation Association, I'll refer to as UDPCA, so I don't have to keep repeating it. We're delighted to see the changes that were put forth to benefit all four lake associations. We actually have all four lake associations here tonight, including Middle Dam Pond. Guys, if you want to raise your hand, Middle Dam Pond.
Welcome, thank you.
The UDPCA is recommending a yes vote tonight on that resolution. The UDPCA will use funding, if it's approved, for the treatment of weeds in the lake. But also, the UDPCA will vote at their Thursday, this Thursday's board meeting, to set aside an equal amount for the investment of the next stormwater control measure that we're recommending be on Jervis Street, which is also being paved this year. That's part of the long-term solution that I talked about a couple of weeks ago, and I think that's the direction the town should be looking at, as well as treating weeds, but also the long-term solution. It also might help with the messaging of some folks that are saying that this money could be better spent doing something else. Well, this association is taking the long-term approach, and we appreciate your efforts. And finally, we'd like to work with the town, as I said, on a project while paving Jervis Streets that will begin this year. This money, combined with the remaining 2017 green grant, we had money appropriated to do some work on Spring Valley, and we could not get the right-of-way from the owner. If that money is still available, that, combined with the monies that the Upper Dam Pond Conservation Association is collecting, would go a long way to creating the second stormwater control measure on the lake. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pendergast.
Jerry Narcoitz, 21 Beach Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. Evening. So I looked at the listing of the $35,000 and some discussion about where it should go, and then I looked at what Tom had put together in a spreadsheet, which showed the amount of money being necessary to adequately treat the different water bodies. And I noticed on the one for Ty Oak specifically, it was listed as just $5,000, and that was either a mistake by us in listing it that way or just a misinterpretation of how much money we needed. We checked with the biological treatment company, and to treat our lake adequately, we needed about $12,000. Or at least that's what they estimate based upon their knowledge of the lake. So I looked at that, and I totaled up everybody's numbers, and it comes out to $44,000 that the town would need to adequately treat the four water bodies and the four water bodies that are represented here. So I did a little math. I love math. So I did a little comparison, and it looks like you have enough money with the $35,000 to treat about 80%. So I made some quick numbers, and you all should have that piece of that document in front of you. So do you have any questions on that? I'm going to list the totals because I just want to make sure it's in the records. Ty Oak would receive about $9,600. Flat River Reservoir would receive $13,200. UDP would get $7,140. MDP would get $5,320. So do you all have any questions on any of that? Great. I look forward to some type of resolution for this. I don't know if this will be a yearly event by the town, and I know that's a dangerous thing to do because you never know if you're going to have money to do these kind of things. But I look forward to some treatment that we've been unable to do around the public beach. There's, you know, a significant fragments growth that is on the south side of the beach, and I believe you can see it on aerial maps for yourself. Okay? Thank you very much for your time. I wish you a great evening.
Thank you. Other members of the public in chambers, public comment on docketed items only. Members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in. Unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. Please unmute yourself. Once. Twice. Three times. Next, Mr. Horton. Good evening. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. We have the volume up on the TV. Shouldn't, thank you, though. We can't hear you. Just make sure you're unmuted. You're on mute. Just unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record, please. Once. Twice. Three times.
Hello?
Oh, we can hear you now.
Okay. All right. It's Anne Marie.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Anne Marie Tario, 31 King Street in Coventry.
Go ahead, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, good. So talking about the ADUs that are on the docket, they actually need to be advised on the next steps in solving a problem that we have. We had done all the preliminary work and in 2008 pulled a permit for a shed in our yard, which was then deemed a side yard. And now the planning committee does not agree with the previous decision that the original person in building had when they gave us the permit, and they don't agree that it's a side yard anymore. So they're asking us to go for a variance because they're calling it a front yard when we already have a precedent set on that location being a side yard in 2008 in the area the shed was put.
Mr. Manager, did you want to just? I'm aware, but I'm just asking if you can follow up with her, because I know that this has been an ongoing issue. I'll have the town manager connect with you tomorrow. You and I already talked today, but I can't get into it further during this public comment. But the town manager will call you tomorrow, and I'll forward your contact information.
Okay, yep, thank you. I just wanted to make it known while it was on the docket and find out what the next steps are to.
Move things along.
Move things, yeah, move things along with the disagreement.
Understood. Anything else?
No, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment from Zoom? Please raise your hand to be let in. Public comment on docketed items going once. Twice. Three times. Public comment is now closed. At this time, I'll take a motion to take the agenda out of order. We have some speakers here that I'd like to move up in the agenda.
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilman LeBlanc.
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Yes.
Councilmember Copley.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
We'll now move down to the report section. Mr. Angel, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a couple of guests tonight. Thank you for accommodating them. On my report is a discussion of Dam 167 and Dam 176. We have guests on both. And what I would like to do with the council's indulgence is I would like to talk about the dam operations permit for dam number 167, which is Flat River Reservoir. I've got a pile of papers, so excuse me while I ferret through them. The council may recall that the town submitted its application for a dam operations permit relative to Flat River Reservoir, also known as Johnson's Pond, and its dam. The operating plan had been kicked back to us a couple of times for some changes. I had forwarded that on to the engineers, our engineers at GZA, Chad Cox and Bill Ladd. Bill Ladd joins us on Zoom this evening to answer some questions. There had been some questions, separate and apart, from council members to me regarding the operating plan itself with respect to when the water level would be raised. So just to give you a present status on this, first of all, David Choppy at the Department of Environmental Management got back to me on Friday saying that the third revision to the operating plan was acceptable to him, but wanted to know if it was okay to go ahead and issue the actual permit. And I told him to hold because I wanted our people to review it for accuracy, given the changes that had been made. There are some obvious changes on its face. The council has been provided a copy of that draft permit tonight. If it has not been distributed to you before, you can have that. There are a couple of obvious changes that refer to one version of the dam operating permit, I think that's dated February 5th, and that's not accurate because the version that was accepted, I think, is dated the 21st or the 22nd. So that's at least one of the things that will need to be changed. One of the points that has been made was that, you know, in reading these materials, folks said, well, how come, you know, you're raising the water level to spillway on June 1st? And that's not entirely accurate. You know, we begin to raise it starting May 1st at a rate of three inches a day. I'm going to let Mr. Ladd speak to that. The engineers have told, I'm not an engineer, I only know what I'm told, as to how our operating plan was put together based on the history of how the dam was operated, a 1995 consent decree between Quidnick Reservoir Company and DEM. So that's how we got to where we are. I'd like to open it up to Mr. Ladd. In general layman's terms, my understanding is that we'll begin to fill the pond, assuming that we're meeting downstream flows and there is no drought in the spring, beginning essentially on May 1st, and that I am told by our engineers that we should be at crest within four to five days of that. With that said, I think it would be helpful to introduce Bill Ladd, have him give you a sense of, in layman's terms, how this works, and to take questions from the council, Madam President. Welcome, Mr. Ladd.
Thanks, Stephen. As you mentioned, the water levels that DEM has basically authorized in the permit were established in the consent agreement with Quidnick Reservoir back in 1995. And those same water levels were also the basis of the 1994 lease agreement between Quidnick and the town. That was then renewed in 2009. So what is in the current operating permit is basically carrying forward those historic water level operation levels that have historically been used back to 95. And as Stephen mentioned, there's different levels for different seasons, and the winter drawdown period is December 1st to March 31st, where it's, you know, drawn down fully. And then, starting in April, the water level operation consent agreement allows the water level to be brought up gradually to within 12 inches of the spillway crest, and be maintained between 12 and 24. But each one of these levels has a criteria for maintaining a downstream flow rate that is established for downstream users and, I think, also environmental reasons. So in April, to maintain it between 12 and 24, for instance, that's provided that this 215 cubic feet per second, as measured at the downstream USGS gauging station. If it is not 215 cubic feet per second, and it drops below the 24 inches, the flow rate could be reduced to 100 cubic feet per second in an attempt to keep it to the 24 inch. And again, if it goes over it, then more water should be released. So that's April 1st to April 30th, 12 to 24 inches down, provided the 215 cubic feet per second is met. May 1st to May 31st is allowed to be brought up to between spillway crest and 12 inches below spillway crest, provided that a minimum flow of 150 cubic feet per second is met at that time. And if the flow rates are low and the water levels drop below, 12 inches below spillway crest, the flow rate from the gates can be reduced to 60 cubic feet per second, in an attempt to maintain it at least at the 12 inches below. And then, starting June 1st, is the allowance to raise it fully to crest with a lower cubic feet per second criteria of 40. So if it's below the crest and you're able to pass 40 cubic feet per second, you know, depending on how much flow and inflow you have with rain and droughts and whatnot, it could drop below the spillway crest or not. If there is a lot of rain, we can pass it over the spillway crest without operating the gates. And that's June 1st to September 30th, and then back to October is the drawdown period from spillway crest down to 36 inch below, and then back to the November 1st to 30th to draw it down even further to the full drawdown of the December 1st to March 31st. So again, those water levels have been consistently throughout the various consent agreements and permit or lease agreement, which are now in the current operating permit.
Questions from members of the council? Councilwoman Pasqua.
Okay. So the lease agreement is not a historical representation of the water levels at all. The, I was part of the coalition that worked to get the legislation passed, and we specifically put in there historical water levels because the lease is not historically accurate. We have gatekeeper records that show this. We have readings from Quidnick Reservoir in both writing and email, and I have data right here that I'm going to share with you. We would start to raise this water in late March. It would be close to full in April, and it undoubtedly would be full for May 1. We would not begin rising at May 1. I mean, I've lived on the reservoir for years. I know what I've seen out my backyard, and I can assure you, the second that, you know, we pass the first few days in April and people don't see that water level rise, people are going to be upset because it's not the norm. We made legislation to dictate historical norms because the lease is not accurate at all. So to give you some data, late March, historically, the target for start, which has been the target for starting to allow the reservoir to rise, not May 1. And in the lease, the December 31st to March 31st says you could go to spillway in that time. It allows for all the way up to spillway elevation up to March 31st. There is nothing in there that says you have to, there's no flow requirements in the lease for March 31st, and it does not say that you must keep it far below the spillway. It allows you to go that high. And that has, we have definitely had water almost to spillway in the month of March. So 15 years of data, March 1, negative 39. March 15th, it's rising to negative 25. April 1, it's negative 5 inches. April 15th, negative 3 inches. May 1, negative .36 inches. May 15th, negative .45 inches. June 1, negative .818. And June 15th, 1.9 inches above. There's no evidence of levels being even close to negative 42, which is where we're at right now. And if we don't start to raise the water level, we will be somewhere in April and May. We have nothing like that here. And so even Sosha would start to raise the water level in April. He would, and his goal was to keep the water level as low as possible and essentially torture the public with this. And he would raise it, he would reduce the flow, the pond would rise to negative 12, and then he would just blow the thing out to negative 24, where he was restricted again. And the reason why people pushed to have him in a domain done and all of this work was because that was not normal. Nobody was complaining about June because at the end of May and June, the water was just about up. The argument was late March, April, and May. Water, that pond should be full. We have other lakes in Coventry that are raising right now. Ty Oak Lake, they talked about in the last meeting, they're already raising it up. This is another town-owned asset, and the dam is operated by private citizens, and this lake is being risen. If we're going to treat Flat River Reservoir to the point where we don't raise it up until May 1, then why are we allowing any other lake in Coventry to be risen before May 1? It makes no sense to me. This should not be treated any different. Also, in your document here, we have a restriction of you can't exceed raising more than three inches per day. When those gates are closed, that thing skyrockets up to a foot a day. I've seen it. So if this thing, if we have a lot of inflow, that can happen. But this document's restricting us from raising it up as fast as it could be done. And so if we're at negative 24 come May 1, because we haven't done anything in April, it's mathematically impossible to be at spillway level at three inches a day in the first four days. I don't know where that's coming from. The math doesn't even work. So I have a lot of gripes with this. Is this is, this is, I would argue that this is probably worse than Sosha water levels, and if we're going to do this, we should have just left it in their hands.
Other council comments or questions? So I don't know who would be appropriate to direct the question to, but I don't know if it was intentional to follow the lease instead of the historic use. You can beat me over the head and tell me that this has already been addressed, but I think it's worth addressing again if we have. But I do agree with Councilwoman Pasqua to an extent that in taking this back for town control, there was an expectation that we would enjoy the, what was previously enjoyed in terms of when the water was raised and lowered prior to 2019. So I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Ladd, or that would be mine.
So I would add that the water levels that are in the lease as of 1995 actually come from Dave Choppy at DEM. I have a letter here from April 27th, 1994, to, I believe it's the legal at DEM, but it outlines those water levels that he basically reviewed with Quidnick Reservoir, all their operating data, and established those water levels as the historic operating spillway elevations and stream flows that were determined, quote, "from a review of the dam records and USGS gauging station data from 1982 to 1993." So going back. Um, so going back to ninety five or ninety four, when they were put into the lease, they were established by DEM's review of the um the historic data at that time, and that's what has been carried forward. So if they haven't been that way, I I guess maybe I could say that um, they were operating outside of the lease prob- possibly, but um.
Yeah, I think it was, Oaks lived in harmony and nobody had an issue and it's just, those were the expectations, but. So my question would be, um, I guess it's kind of multifaceted. One would be, is is the 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 dam operation permit that we've outlined here real only based on the nineteen ninety five lease? Or are there engineering factors at play here where you're saying you can't allow so so much flow because of the condition of the gates or the pipes or is that part of the picture here or is it just blindly following the previous lease? And my my second part of that question would be, is there a reason you can foresee that DEM would not allow us to return to parameters that were historic, not necessarily in alignment with the lease?
So um, it is following the, it isn't just the lease, but the the lease is based on the consent agreement and the historic established by DEM. So that is what DEM has considered to be the historic use. So it's a little tough for me to argue with David that, that, you know, he's not right or whatever. Um, but no, it to you, to the second part of question, it's not based on engineering requirements for at this time for the gate condition or or the spillway. Um, the flow rates that DEM is asking for as far as incremental increases, um, I believe is for environmental impact, you know, not to inundate an area too quick for probably um ecological reasons, but and then the downstream flow rates are similar either for usage or um, you know, whether it's fish or or wildlife or in um other uh habit habitation down downstream.
So is there any opportunity to shift the schedule at all in following with the flow rates that you're asking for earlier so that way it can be more in line with historic norms and marry with the the flow rate or ecological concerns?
I, you know, I believe Stephen, maybe we can request to to have a meeting with David uh Choppy at at DEM and to discuss some of the specifics on that as far as the timing.
Yeah, and I'd love to know the disconnect between whatever figures Mr. Pasqua is bringing forth that are from the the Quidnick data and what Quidnick data Mr. Choppy is looking at and making sure we're on the same page here. This is, this is a big, this is a big document. This is a significant document and I I think we'd rather measure, measure a couple times and cut once on this, so. Um, uh, I'm sorry, um, Councilman, um, Asko, I believe Councilman could ball the other hand up? Or did I ask your questions?
You kind of answered my question. I just don't understand the disconnect between everything that Councilman Pasqua has been working on and knows and you have all this information. I must, doesn't DEM know this? And why doesn't DEM, if DE, if DEM doesn't know it, why don't they? I mean, you have been working on this forever with everybody on, well, most of the people on this council, so I don't understand the disconnect.
Uh, Councilman Pasqua.
So to to further go on DEM's position that the lease is historic, I'm going to quote an ICO that was issued to Sosha July thirteenth, two thousand twenty two. And in DEM's words, they put, there is also historic precedent for a further reduction of stream flow to account for drought or other drier than normal rainfall conditions as outlined in our IDM's April twenty twenty one letter and July eleven twenty two letter. Given the present drier than normal conditions, Ridenham believes the appropriate stream flow should be twenty four CFS to allow the pond to come up the spillway. This additional reduction is provided in section thirteen of the form of consent agreement. But this is not outlined in here. And they're talking about in this, in this document that you have here, it's forty CFS. But in all the records that we have here, we're showing rates of in two thousand eighteen between June and September, two thousand eighteen was twenty three CFS at one point, seventeen was seventeen point seven CFS and sixteen, it was seventeen point five CFS. In two thousand fifteen, the flow was reduced to ten point five CFS. This is all historic data. And DEM in their consent, in their cease and desist letter, referenced USGS as a source of information to determine flow rates. When you go back and look, flow rates have been reduced below forty. It's sometimes in in March and April. Why is that ignored? This, that data is available that anybody right now on USGS and and DM has put it in writing that they reference it. Reviewed available data from United States Geological Survey Streamflow Gauge for the South Branch of the Patuxet River and determined in the review, the streamfall has been maintained levels exceeding forty CFS in that agreement. This is what they were, in the cease and desist they were talking about. But my point is, they were reading the gauges at the USGS. And this, the, the we definitely have shown level uh flows far below forty. So to say that we're stuck to forty, again, I I I'll go back to what I said a few minutes ago. We put this thing, we we might as well just let Sosha keep it. Because he, according to DEM, followed the lease. And we ended up with eight weeks of water because you had uh two hundred and fifteen cubic feet per second flow in April with a a restriction of negative twelve to twenty four. In May, you were negative twelve to full. And in in the uh summer months, you had to maintain at least forty cubic feet per second. All of those things together gave you water from somewhere around June one, the second week of August, and that's it. This is, we've done nothing different than Sosha, nothing.
Yeah, you are correct that they do have a provision for um drought conditions, particularly in the summer. They don't want it to drop below the spillway crest for muscle habitat and whatnot, so um they they do have a precedent for relaxing the forty, so I believe that you can use that to use lower than forty cubic feet per second and maintain it at the crest during the uh during the summer months.
Other comments from councilmembers, uh Councilman Brown?
Um, I agree with my fellow councilpeople. It just seems like there's a big disconnect here between DEM and the town. I mean, John has done a great job with historical data. I know the Johnson's Pond Civic Association has that data too. It it just seems like when other lakes and ponds are rising, Johnson's Pond is dropping. And that needs to stop. This is a big issue for the town that affects a lot of people. It needs to stop. It needs to be readdressed and um we need to go back to DEM and make our argument that this historical data is not really historical. Thank you.
Vice President Feduci.
Just to clarify, on the front here, uh, we mentioned a contact person. So seeing how this can get us going here, uh, there's a lot of engineering and a lot of numbers on here. Who is the person eventually that's going to be making these decisions on, you know, given the time period, when to keep what level and is that going to be a a town employee of the town doing that and then?
Saying the town will.
Yeah, the town is the operator of the dam, the town will.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Pasqua.
Just to comment on that, the other town-owned lakes are basically raised and lowered by private citizens. We don't have employed dam keepers anywhere. So there's, there's no official town people raising these these bodies of water. And this is again, brings me to my other point. Why are we treating Flat River Reservoir differently? If Taiwok Lake is allowed to rise in April, it's rising now. It's to me insane to have another body of water in town of Coventry they own not do the same thing. If we're going to treat them one way, then treat everybody the the same way. If we're not going to allow Flat River Reservoir to rise until May one, then the other lake should be winter level until May one. It's only fair.
Um, other comments from councilmembers? Questions? So um, I don't know, Solicitor, if there's a next step we can get together with DEM on this or uh, there's probably some other folks that need to be included, but it just seems like there's a a disconnect here and I have to be really compelled to understand.
I agree.
Yeah, why there's.
I I agree, which is why I invited Mr. Lad here tonight to address the questions. Um, and I did not accept the dam permit as written. So I think the next step is for myself and the engineers and the town manager to meet with David Choppy and his people. I would like to have Mr. Pasqua not only uh send me the historical data that he has, but but its source of citation so that we can, you know, we can track that back with our engineers and go in and make the arguments. And no decision will be made until the council says that we should.
Um, Councilman the Blank.
Um, I know when it comes to other instances where we're dealing with the state, sometimes we have council members in involved in those meetings. I didn't know if it was was an opportunity where we could have Mr. Pasqua join uh that meeting. Just wanted to throw it out.
Yeah, I would, I would be in in favor of that.
I would, I would appreciate that if the council would be okay with it.
Yep. Um, anything else on the dam permit or for Mr. Lad? Was there anything else you had Mr. Lad here for? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go back to uh Solicitor.
So the next item under my report, taking it out of order, is dam number one seventy six. As discussed at the last council meeting, this is another high hazard dam. Um, it is in very bad condition. Um, as you know, under order from DEM in an administrative action, we owe DEM um certain digestion of information and a plan to move forward toward, you know, identifying what our problems are, the obstacles to fixing those problems, forecasting some costs, some time horizon to fix, so forth and so on. Uh, we've been working with Fuss and O'Neil engineers on this. Um, you know, they've done an assessment, made findings, put together a plan and amended project scope and time horizon leading to the dam repair. Um, and so I have invited uh two of the folks who are on this project at Fuss and O'Neil, Justin um Dechen and Dean is here with us tonight. They can come to the podium, they have a slide presentation for you. Uh, there are some issues related to this um particular dam. Because it is part of litigation, we'll be discussing that in executive session later. But this particular presentation is to bring the council up to speed on what's been discovered here um by these folks through dive inspection. Um, you know, and and I think the divers have been out twice, right? So we have two dive reports. Um, you folks have been on scene. Um, so I'll turn it over to you and then have the council ask that question.
Okay, good evening. Um, so I'm Justin Deschun from Fuss and O'Neil, um, speaking to you about the Coventry Reservoir Dam, number one seventy six. Next slide. The agenda is uh some introductions of Dean and myself. We're going to talk about the the background of the dam and how we got to this situation. And then also the uh next steps to that we're going to tackle. Next slide, please. So I'm Justin Deschun, I'm the project manager for this, and with me is Dean Odette. He is the senior resource us moving forward on the the study and the design of the improvements. Next slide. Talking on the dam background, uh, next slide, please. So as mentioned before, this is a very old uh existing dam with a masonry wall construction. Photo shown gives you a pretty good indication of the condition that it's in. It's a L-shaped embankment, which is in uh in poor condition. Uh, but it's a high hazard dam and downstream of that is Johnson's Pond, which was mentioned earlier today. In twenty twenty, there was a notice of violation from DEM about the condition of the the dam. Low-level outlet, which allows the impoundment behind the dam to be drained, uh, is not functioning. There's also some missing stones along the spillway of the dam and depressions as well indicating that the dam is in poor condition. In the report or in the notice of violation itself, it indicated that the s- the spillway and the dam may be unsafe as stated by Ridenham. Next slide. So the town entered into a consent decree with uh Ridenham. We have been assisting the town in developing conceptual design for the repair. During the fall of twenty twenty four, we had additional issues that were discovered. The divers initially indicated that there were some depressions that were forming. Um, they went back out to verify the conditions and basically the the depressions indicate that some of the silt and whatnot can be being pulled through the dam, um, indicating that it is in need of repair. Also, there was a H and H model that we developed in-house indicating um that the spillway was not large enough to pass the design storm. You go to the next slide, please. There are some of the photos that were taken during our inspection. Um, and you can see the missing stones on the picture to the left. And also there's some trees that are growing up through the the dam, which can cause a dam to fail prematurely if the tree tips over, the roots pull out some material and it weakens the dam. Next slide, please. So during the H and H modeling, um, we looked at the the entire drainage area and when it receives a flood event, ten years, fifty years, a hundred years, how much water passes over the dam. And in that study, between the ten-year storm and the fifty-year storm, the spillway is not able to pass that amount of water, which means that the dam is going to overtop on one of its embankments. When the dam overtops, there's a loss of material, there's structural failures, things that can happen that are definitely not good. It's color-coded with the the red, so about the twenty-five-year storm event is when you have the overtopping. Uh, next slide, please. For the conceptual design, um, what we've looked at is armoring the embankment to allow it to overtop safely. That allows the spillway to stay at the same elevation and not increasing flows downstream, um, so the dam would function the same way. It's just it would not fail as it's designed to overtop during those high storm events. Next slide, please. During um our study, we came up with a opinion of costs. It should be noted that there is a a large contingency in there as well, um, but these are the numbers and roughly where they correspond to the the work for the embankment, for the spillway, for the low-level outlet. And these are present-day costs.
Just to comment on that slide, if I could. Um, the math's not working, uh, we're off seventy grand. I'm not sure which line item, um, but when I add up um the first one, two, three, four, five rows, it does not come to three point five million.
Okay.
Um, it comes to three point four three. Seventy grand's a decent amount of money, so just wanted to call it out.
I think we rounded up because I asked them to keep it to two significant figures, so when they got Understood, sir. Uh, next slide, please. All right, the next steps. Um, as mentioned, we owe Ridenham the uh thirty percent design report, so that's going to be a compilation of the the work that we've done, diving reports. We've done a geotechnical examination of the dam itself, soils that are there. All of this will be wrapped up and sent to Ridenham by the end of next month. And then discussing with the town council on funding and moving forward on the project.
Before we open it up to the rest of the council, I think it's important. Before we open it up to the rest of the council, I think it's important, if you could, just share, why should Coventry residents care that this doesn't fail? Can you help explain the importance of this being repaired for folks and why this investment? Because I think folks would look and say, oh, there's only like a handful of houses here. Who cares if this fails? You know, the water just goes downstream. It's a small little, you know, pond. If you... Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
This is something that we've been talking about with the engineering group in terms of litigation. As I've explained to the council on at least two other occasions, this is upstream and flows directly into Johnson's Pond. So if this fails, that entire impoundment and its reason for failure would be released into Johnson's Pond. That's, that's number one. Number two is part of, you know, do we decommission or do we rebuild? The costs, and I know that Dean can talk to this, the costs associated with decommissioning, which means take the dam down, is the same or more based upon the environmental impact. So, you know, and I'm not just talking about keeping plant life alive. We're talking about hundreds of years of impoundment of contaminants that will be released. DEM, EPA, they require that you study exactly the nature of what contaminants are in the impoundment, study what would happen downstream when the contaminants are released. And then, of course, it's not as if that impoundment would be released into a reservoir where only three or four people or 10 people live on it, like the Coventry Reservoir, this reservoir. You'd be releasing it into Johnson's Pond where several hundred people live on the water. So that's the dialogue we've been having. So if you folks want to give the technical aspects of it, by all means.
That's a pretty good rundown. It is a high hazard dam, so any, any failure there is high hazard, and it does drain directly into Johnson's Pond. Also, stump pond, as it's called on some maps, it is a fairly large water body, and that would disappear with the, if the dam was removed.
Questions, comments from members of the council on the presentation? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
If I can, just to, just to finish up the topic, you've all been provided with a copy of, of the PowerPoint. The estimated cost to fix this is $5.9 million. I don't know if, Dean, you want to talk to this, but you folks have people on your staff that look for funding in these areas. It's not as if this problem is going to go away, but it certainly isn't something that can get fixed next week. So where do we go to get money? Who do you have to look for it? And, you know, then we're going to have, I'm going to have to discuss with DEM and the hearing officer what to do about a construction schedule, because it's not as if after March 31st, we have money to continue right now with proceeding towards a fix on this. And in the meantime, you know, we've got trees that need to be cut, and other preparation needs to be made should there be, you know, an emergency situation. We need to make those preparations before that emergency is upon us. So I don't know if you can tell us about the funding piece that you guys do.
Yeah, I mean, not to be facetious, but, you know, six weeks ago, I probably would have had a better story for you than I do today. You know, BRIC FEMA is a, FEMA, for example, is a high hazard dam mitigation program. It's very competitive, but it's there. You know, for example, we apply for different communities for a high hazard dam repairs, multimillion-dollar projects. But it's an extraordinarily competitive program, and FEMA definitely has his bullseye on it. There's a huge funding program, the building resilience, resilient infrastructure in communities. That's billions of dollars every year that grant announcement's been pulled. And Lord knows what really happens, you know, to it and how much funding is really going to get allocated to it. So it's very much in flux. Some states have state, for example, state of Massachusetts, which we're not in, has a very active dam repair grant program for municipalities. Rhode Island does not. And only thing from a federal basis would be FEMA and this high hazard dam program. But like I said, a lot of people look at that program, look for money. You know, I think your best opportunity, you know, and Steve referred to this, is finding phasing, coordinating these improvements. I think DEM is going to understand, like, the scale of improvements that need to happen, and, you know, negotiating that with them, and then seeing how FEMA funding sort of pans out here over the next 12 months.
Councilman Capaldi.
Are there any imminent dangers right now? Like, we're talking about, that's a $6 million fee. I mean, do we have to hurry? I know nothing is going to happen overnight, but are we looking at, you guys better hurry up and find this money now because this dam's going to burst?
I hate saying this to you. I mean, right now, the dam's not moving. You know, that's the good news. You know, Justin said it before, where, you know, we had a diver and the conditions actually got worse in a year. And, and what he means by conditions is that the void spaces behind the masonry wall of the dam underneath the spillway are getting bigger. So that means you're losing soil. It's not usually a good thing for a dam. There's short-term repairs it could do, but they're not long-term repairs. Justin had a slide up there that water's coming over the top of the dam. An inch of water, probably not a big deal. You know, three feet of water, probably really bad. And I, you know, you hate saying it, you don't know, and that storm, that storm could be never. That storm could be five years from now. That storm could be two weeks from now. You know, Houston, the half PMF, by the way, that we're using, so PMF is a probable maximum flood, just to talk about probabilities, that's 16, 16 and a half inches of rainfall. You know, that's not so improbable. You know, in Houston, they had all that flooding there, they, that was 44 inches of rainfall in 24 hours. That's their entire year in 24 hours. And you're just seeing these types of very intense events. So I can't promise you that doesn't hap, that it could be two weeks from now, but it could never happen either. And based on our math, that spillway starts to overtop someplace between the 10-year and the 50-year storm. You know, someplace. And a 10-year storm has a 10% chance of happening any given year. A 50-year storm has a 2% chance of happening any given year. So some, someplace, and, and the last thing I'd add to that is that we have seen, it's clear, based on what's there on the ground, is that dam has overtopped in the past. And you could see the flow paths, you could see the erosion on the dam. It's just waiting for, you know, enough of them to happen and take away enough soil, or wait for something big enough that, like I said, three feet coming over the top of the dam would be really bad.
Councilman Pasqua.
What about something along the lines of a coffer dam to temporarily take pressure off of it while we work on this problem? Is there some type of solution like that that we could do?
Could, but the problem is the coffer dam is going to fail. Like, if you're going to work on the dam, you're going to put a coffer dam. I have a project in Connecticut for the state of Connecticut that was actually on like national news last January because it almost failed. And we did build a coffer dam there. There's a whole bunch of reasons for that. It's not a state-owned dam. They had to take over the dam from a private property owner. The city of Norwich was immediately downstream of the dam, and that dam failing would be really bad for the city of Norwich. So there's a coffer dam there. The problem is, is the coffer dam, you know, we probably have to think about it a little bit more, but it still doesn't, are you going to build a coffer dam so high that it can't overtop the other dam? And if you do, what happens upstream of that? And then if you don't, then you got to build a coffer dam so that it overtops. And at that point, you start spending so much money on a coffer dam that you're already millions and, you know, it's a couple million dollars you could do for a repair, you know, throw into the repair.
Solicitor Angel.
So in discussions with DEM, the proper process to alleviate some of the risk is we do have a tree removal plan that we have put together. The emergency plan also calls for sandbagging, the masonry front of that dam with, and I'm not talking about little sandbags, I'm talking about tonnage, to essentially build a new dam face in front of the dam face made out of sandbags. I would expect that DEM probably will make us do that. And I don't want to get too far down the road on the administrative action. They're going to make us do something. And certainly, the tree removal plan is not in the budget right now, and neither the sandbags. This particular site poses some unique challenges with respect to access to that machinery, and that's why that cost is really pretty high.
The trees are a particular problem, because all it takes is a, you know, you have some decent trees up on that dam, and all it takes is a tree in the middle of a storm. You could easily see this happening, falling over, whole root wide, gets pulled out of the dam. Now you have a huge weak point in your dam that has water up, and now it's a preferential pathway for water inside the dam instead of going through 15 feet of dam. Now it needs to get through three feet of soil because you lost all that. And that's how a dam can start unraveling very quickly in the middle of a storm. So removing trees, which we've been talking about, I think another major one is the low-level outlet. You know, and getting the low-level outlet, it'd be best to do it all at once, but the value of the low-level outlet is you could, if something, you know, the next 20, 10 storm is on the horizon, you know, someone could get out there, start draining the pond, you know, open up the low level. Right now, you have no ability to remove pressure from that dam. Matter of fact, the NLV identified this dam as unsafe, and the first thing they identified was the lack of the low-level outlet. They, that, they characterized the dam as unsafe because of the inability to draw down that dam.
Vice President Verducci.
Just a quick question to connect this and the other dam project. Would we ever consider having to release water in Johnson's Pond if this one is a high hazard above it flowing into it? I'm just seeing, are these, are these lengths, or is it like a comprehensive strategy we'd need to have here?
That's why we fixed the spillway, potentially. We could handle it. There's no issue with the water level in the pond over this.
On, on Johnson's Pond, that, as the council recalls from my last presentation two weeks ago, that's why the repairs were done the way they were done on the Johnson's Pond, so that you can take water over that spillway like nobody's business. Okay, that's, that's what it's there for. But if you're, if you're going to have a rain event of, you know, a 20-inch magnitude that isn't letting up, and you lose that impoundment at the Coventry Reservoir, I don't know what that flow of water looks like, model-wise, through, we haven't done a study on that, what that looks like model-wise, but it's going to be a little more than four and a half or five feet going over the spillway at Johnson's Pond. So, all at once, anyway. So that's, you know, these are, this discussion of what to do in the interim is a discussion that we'll need to have with DEM in the context of the litigation that we'll be talking about later. But anyway, I, you know, wanted to give the council a flavor for, you know, what, what you're in for. We, you're definitely going to have to do some repairs, you know, in the short term, 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, whatever it is. But we need to take some steps in that direction with respect to the trees, the sandbags, and the lower-level outlet gates. So.
Anything else for Fussin' O'Neil? Thank you, gentlemen. So we'll get to the rest of the solicitor's report later. I know there's quite a few people here for that first resolution, so I'm going to jump to that one if everybody's okay with that. And that's item A under Resolutions 2025-8, to approve the allocation of $35,000 in ARPA funds for the invasive weed management and intervention in the Flat River Reservoir. This page is 17 to 19 in our packet. I will toss this back to the resolution sponsors now that it's back in front of us, and I know there's been revisions made. So, Councilman Pasqua and Brown.
Thank you. Glad we could revisit this. So I, I'm fully in support of the changes that we made to this resolution, and I, I think that the other bodies of water also need and deserve the funding to also combat weeds. And I love what Upper Dam Pond's doing with the long-term idea. That's great. So, you know, I just want to stress that, for me right now, this is, this, this, this is a, this resolution and my thought is this is a one-time allocation. This is not something that I'm looking to have done every year. The Johnson's River Reservoir, I should say, missed three years of weed treatments. And if you think about it like a hayfield, a yard that doesn't get cut for three years, you end up with a hayfield, and it's expensive to have equipment come in and cut that down and put it back to manageable levels. And this is the situation that that particular body of water is in. Additionally, we all know that Sosha had run the reservoir at much lower levels for years, and that goes back to the historical norms. This was not historic, so we never had this issue with weeds like this. But the reservoir has been dramatically low over the last few years because of the type of operation that they've been doing. And so it caused a problem where the normal $5,000 state grant and the private funding that people have stepped up with just isn't going to get the problem under control this year. So that's why I'm seeking the $35,000 as a one-time injection from ARPA to be able to bring the weed issue down to a manageable level. And I fully support other lakes getting this, and I, and I hope that it does the same thing for you guys as well, brings it down to even better manageable position. So your money goes further going forward. That would, that would be great, and I would, I want that for you. And, you know, as I said before, I don't want the public thinking that anything negative towards their council people because this resolution didn't mention their bodies of water, because I wrote this, and the only body of water in my district is River Reservoir. So I wrote it for River Reservoir, but I encouraged and was happy to hear that their other counselors wanted amendments for lakes in their district. So I make a motion to approve the, the resolution as amended, and I'll reread the resolution here. Okay. Yeah, let me pull it back up here. Sorry, I had some notes and... So I'll just read the resolution. So, Resolution, approve one-time allocation of $35,000 of ARPA funds for invasive weed management intervention in the Flat River Reservoir, $89.25 for Upper Dam Pond, $66.50 for Middle Dam, and $5,000 for Ty Oak Lake. And the resolution reads as this, whereas the Town of Coventry recognizes the importance of Flat River Reservoir's fragile environment, economic impact, and recreational value to the community, and whereas the Town of Coventry in June of 2024 was granted eminent domain by court order, obtaining ownership of the Flat River Reservoir for public use and benefit, and whereas the Town of Coventry is committed to developing meaningful public access to the reservoir to facilitate activities, including but not limited to fishing, boating, water skiing, wakeboard, jet skiing, swimming, and other recreational pursuits, and whereas the Town of Coventry is dedicated to the ongoing maintenance of reservoir, including measures for invasive weed abatement to protect its water and recreational usability. Whereas Town of Coventry acknowledges the Flat River Reservoir has experienced lower-than-normal water levels over the last four years, as well as a lack of invasive weed treatments due to the actions of the previous owner, Sosha Holdings, during the last, during the preceding two years. So actually, that should be three years, not two. Whereas the Town of Coventry recognizes the invasive weed situation of Flat River Reservoir is significantly worse in recent history due to the lack of maintenance during the aforementioned period, and whereas the town's other three public bodies of water also have a fragile environment that requires annual treatment and have economic impact and provide recreational value to our community. Now therefore be resolved that the Honorable Town Council allocates $35,000 of ARPA funding to the herbicide prevention, to treat invasive weeds in the Flat River Reservoir for the 2025 season, $89.25 for Upper Dam Pond, $66.50 for Middle Dam, and $5,000 for Ty Oak Lake for a total of $55,575. And...
So we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Motion to approve, do I hear a second?
So Councilman Brown wants to make an amendment to this.
We got to amend after we get a motion.
Yeah, so, okay, so I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Councilman Brown. Discussion, Councilman Brown.
I'd like to amend it to give Ty Oak Lake what, if there was a misunderstanding, I'd like to make amends to that and give them the $4,600, I believe, more, Jerry? Come on, you're the math guy.
So I would, I would like to amend it so everybody got what they asked for on a one-time expenditure. I would like to add $4,600 to the Ty Oak Lake Association.
So we have a motion to amend line 48, Councilman Brown, for that Ty Oak Lake number?
Yes.
And what, someone do the math and what the new total would be, please?
New total, $60,175.
Motion is second. Discussion, members of the council. It's President Verducci.
Do we get a fiscal note?
Yeah. But what specific allocation of ARPA? Can we just add that to this resolution so we have that particular? I know there's been instances in the past where we've, there hasn't been clarity around what ARPA, so can we add allocates 35, or it's not going to be, oh, I'm sorry, I see how it's written. So...
So do we want Councilman Brown to maybe add that?
Add that, yeah, we need to add what ARPA line that's going to be. It's the official title.
Yeah, so I amend that to include open space money out of ARPA.
The open space line item. Councilman the blank.
I'm pretty sure the last time this resolution was discussed, there was question on whether or not ARPA funds could actually be utilized for this weed abatement. Do we have anybody from the town that actually confirmed whether or not this would be an allowed cost?
Cannot confirm that.
Because if, if it's not an allowed cost, it actually ends up costing the town even more money, because then we spent the money and then we had to pay the federal government back. So I just wanted confirmation from somebody on the town that we actually looked at the ARPA regulations and determined that it was, sure.
Mr. Angel.
So in general, a, a save-all in the treasury guidance as to how you spend ARPA money is that you actually can deficit spend the $55,000, and because you created a deficit, you can use the ARPA money to fill in the deficit. However, the allocation of ARPA funding that period ended officially on December 31st, 2024, and the council may recall that MOUs had to be put in place between department heads and the administration, which was a requirement of the ARPA spend on the federal level. So with that said, the ARPA money was allocated toward that open space line item, assuming, and I don't have it in front of me, but assuming that that open space line item allows for that open space money to be spent on weed abatement, then it can be used for that. Long drawn-out explanation, but that's the explanation. So I, I don't know what that open space money can be used for. Maybe the finance director or the town manager knows. It's not detailed, it's just general open slash public space line item in the MOU. I didn't put in there all the variety that that could encompass.
Councilman Copley.
I support this, you know, resolution, but I'd rather be safe than sorry and get clarification on what we really can do with that money before we go ahead and do it.
I'd be open to the passage of this tonight with a contingent upon the, the confirmation that it can be spent on this. I think everybody here has stated that they're in favor of making this investment, so I, I think that, just like we would for a license that's in the process of finishing its inspection process where we do contingent in that way, and if it's found that we cannot actually use those funds, we can bring it back here, and I'd ask that the finance director and the town manager bring forth alternative options for, for funds that can be used for this. Separate and apart, I'm glad that we're, I'd, glad that we're raising the amounts, because in my opinion, if we're going to level set Flat River Reservoir, we should help level set, as Councilman Pasqua said, for all the other bodies of water here, and give everybody a fighting chance. I do think this council needs to have a larger discussion about unifying the communities around these bodies of water and how we can start to work smarter about jointly applying for grant funds or anything with the infrastructure bank, and that we're all beating to the, the same drum here and singing from the same sheet of music. And at the end of the day, I know there's been some chatter about that this, these funds could be better invested elsewhere. Something that can be used by members of the public, to me, is a worthwhile investment. I know there's sensitivity around Flat River Reservoir and the investment, but as we've stated legally, the public access is required. It is going to happen, it has to happen, and my argument would be, what quality of public access would there be if folks are going to swim or kayak in this, or boat in this, or any of our bodies of water if they're getting tangled in weeds and then they can't even move through the water? We, we're fortunate enough to have these resources, these natural resources here in Coventry. Folks travel to come and utilize them from other municipalities, and they're well-known throughout the state, and we're, we should be proud of them, and we should take care of them as such. And like I said, I think there's a larger conversation here about having some sort of formal liaison between the town and leadership of these associations to ensure that we're all working together to preserve these natural resources. So before we move ahead, I'd like to hear other discussion. I, I know that time is, I know that we're looking to get a, at this point, we'll probably get a joint quote from the weed abatement company, and I wonder if that would change given, at all, given we're going in jointly, but maybe it won't, maybe the cost per acre is the cost per acre. But I'm certainly open to hear the council if folks want to do it approved on a contingent basis, or if they, they'd like to continue to March 11th. I'd also welcome the solicitor's opinion here on what would be, behoove us legally.
So presently, you have resolution before the council. It's been first and seconded. There is an amendment before the council that need, that has a first and a second that needs to be voted on if you're going to move this tonight. You next meet in two weeks, so procedurally, if you were to reconsider, the, the proper procedure would be to reconsider the vote on the resolution at that time if for some reason you need to change the funding piece. You would reconsider the vote on the resolution, and you would essentially revote it, vote it, vote it down, and then revote something in its place or vote to table it. I would recommend that that time you vote to table the original if you have to change your funding source, and then you put a new resolution in its place. Otherwise, you run into the problem of revisiting a legislative enactment for the second time in the same term, which is problematic. So if you vote on this tonight and you vote yes, which everybody's in agreement that you'd like to move forward with this, you've got to be sure that you can get an answer to your funding question in two weeks, because you have to reconsider it in two weeks. If, if after that, you get an answer to your funding question and it's contrary to what you've appropriated for, theoretically, you run into a problem with the basic tenants of the ARPA spend.
Is it possible just to prove it without a funding mechanism and the town will fund it, either through ARPA, contingency, capital, reserve?
Prefer a paper trail. We need this in writing of where it's going to come from. What's the discussion from the council? Councilman Pasqua.
I agree with a lot of what you said about public access and water quality. I mean, this council stepped forward and decided to make an investment in saving the largest body, recreational body of water in the state, really. And so the, not paying attention to the water quality and then owning the fact that you have to make public access is, is like building a park with no intent of building a road to it. Makes no sense. So I'm, I'm glad that we recognize that. The other thing that I think is extremely important to bring up, though, is that if we're talking about, time is a little bit of an issue here, because JPCA is now, needs to file this week for their permitting applications for the treatment. And so if, if it's unknown on how much is getting treated, then that's an issue, and I think maybe if it's, it's all right, maybe JPCA President Lamoy, who's here, who's been working on this permitting stuff and been dealing with this for years, if he can offer some insight at the stage that they're at, make that's helpful and understand.
Yeah, let's, um, let's just actually get, we should get through the mo, the amendment motion and go back to the motion as amended. So is there any discussion on the amendment to up the amount for Ty Oak, Ty Oak Lake and clarify the ARPA funding line? All right, if there's none on the amendment, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
So now we're back to the resolution as amended. Ms. Lamoy, if you'd like to come, come forward.
Mark Lamoy, 34 Island Drive, President.
We're trying to make a decision whether or not to renew this thing, and he's, he's making an argument that... Which is, the permit is to weed kill weeds. So if there's an element of time here, I think the council should have an idea of that.
So the element of time answer is typically, in previous years, we've always filed our DEM permit by February 1st. I've been speaking with Joe from Water and Wetlands, and he can delay the, well, he has delayed the permit application. He told me yesterday it takes a minimum of 45 days minimum to get back the application, the permit approval from DEM, but that's at the best-case scenario, so we are up against it a little bit.
What's the harm in applying for the permit before the, say, the resolution's approved on March 11?
So I can apply for the permit, so if the dollar figure is $35,000, I think that equals out to 77 acres. I can include the 77 acres along with all the private residents that are chipping in for the treatment costs, as well as our state grant. There's no harm in pulling back the amount you, you treat for the permit. You can never go more than the permit, but you can always pull back.
Okay. Any of the other associations, anything on timing, just so the record is aware? Okay. Okay. So we're now back to the resolution as amended. Further discussion from the council? Councilman the blank.
Just so I have a clear understanding when we take this vote. So we're going to take this vote contingent upon someone from the town confirming that we can spend ARPA. Is that an accurate statement or no?
That was a suggestion I threw out there. I'm asking for the pleasure of the council. It's up to, it's up to the council.
Oh, I, I thought when we just voted on amendment, you'd said something about ARPA funding amendment as well.
No, that, it was just, it was adding clarifying language of what ARPA funding they were looking to spend from.
Gotcha.
That was it, that the contingency piece is not, has not been made as a formal motion.
So I, I mean, I personally don't feel comfortable voting for the funding if we don't know the funding source is actually the source that can be utilized. So I would, I would love to know, I mean, I'm, I'm for it. I would like to say that there are ponds in here that have significant public access, and then there's Flat River Road, who in, in my opinion, does not have significant public access. So this would be a, a one-time vote for me on a non-dam expense associated to Flat River Road until there's actual significant public access given to that, that body of water. I mean, that's what I'm hearing from my constituents going, how come, how much do we spend in legal fees on Johnson's Pond? I don't know the answer currently. I know it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, but in my opinion, we shouldn't be throwing even more money towards a body of water that the total taxpayers don't have access to currently, in my opinion. But I, again, just wanted to state that I think that we need to have somebody from the town confirm that we can use ARPA funds for this.
Councilman Pasqua.
I would entertain passing this contingent upon ARPA funds, and if we need to make a new resolution because we can't use ARPA funds, then we just quickly make one for the next meeting. But just to touch base again on funding this, the, the same kind of theology that caused us to be behind on our trash trucks and roads, I feel is in play here. If we don't pay attention to the maintenance of this, it's $35,000 today, but, you know, in the future, when we actually make public access and the town is screaming because they're tangled in weeds, and now we've got to treat a much larger area, and the costs have gone up, now we're talking maybe $150,000, because we didn't do it now. It's the same theology. We, we pushed off the idea of fixing roads, and it cost us. We pushed the idea off of fixing trash trucks, and it cost us. We're here, back in the same position with old, old mindset. We need, we need to fix this now before the problem gets worse. So I would be open to passing this with confirmation that we can use ARPA. If we can't, let's get, let's find the money, and let's put this back in front of the council ASAP.
Vice President Verducci.
Just curious, if we find that ARPA is not a use we can do, is, we would have to, would we be subject to still funding this as, as it's currently amended now, or would we have to redraft like Councilman was saying?
If I can just go over the process again, if the ARPA funding, this resolution specifically calls for a specific ARPA funding mechanism. If, if that funding mechanism, if you pass the resolution and the funding mechanism is unavailable, then my recommendation procedurally in two weeks is to take a vote to A, reconsider the vote on the resolution, and then B, to table this resolution. Okay? At that same time, at that same meeting, you may also introduce, it has to be on the agenda, of course, a new resolution that does everything that this one does, except there would be a different funding mechanism in that resolution. Because this is a legislative enactment, you need to reconsider it and dispose of it another way, because essentially, the enactment would be defective because the funding source fails.
Further comments from council members? Councilman Copley?
I agree with the solicitor 100% on that, and that's what I would like to do.
Sorry, can you clarify what you mean?
I would like to table it then to exactly find out what we're going to be doing.
He was saying, he's talking about a table at March 11th.
Okay.
If, if it was approved contingently tonight, that's what his, he's referring to then.
Yes, I think we should do then.
Just to clarify, I'm not recommending a contingent.
Yeah, yeah.
Approval. I'm recommending that if this council wants to pass this resolution as amended, go ahead and do it, and over the course of the next two weeks, confirm whether or not this funding source can be used. If it cannot be used, then on the next agenda, there are two things. This resolution, again, to be reconsidered and then tabled, and then for another resolution to take its place that is essentially a mirror image, except for there would be a new source of funding, and then you would vote on that one.
Councilman Capaldi.
So I don't really know where we are right now, but I want to make a motion to pass with the amend, the amendment.
Is there any amendment on the floor?
Okay, so...
Councilman Pasqua?
I agree with that.
Would have to amend. Would have to amend his original motion on the resolution as amended. If there was, if that, that's how the process would have to go. But first, is there other discussion from members of the council? What it, what I'm assessing here is, it's, it's either, it sounds like the money is not going to be expended between now and March 11th, correct? Is weed abatement going to happen between now and March 11th? Okay. So, basically, what we're picking between here is continuing this to March 11th and revising one sentence of this resolution, or we're passing it contingently, having to bring forward this resolution, vote to reconsider, table, and then also have a second resolution on the table with the different funding source. So, one sounds like it's more, requires more administration when we're not going to be doing weed abatement in the next two weeks, and one sounds like it's going to be a lot less confusing. So, if it's not going to affect the ability to abate weeds, and we have a commitment, we're hearing from the discussion of the council that we want to fund this. And I think, I think Mr. Perillo has said that contingency may be an option here as well to fund this. I, my, my personal preference to keep things simple and to make sure that we're doing this the right way, and that we're not having to introduce multiple resolutions and backtrack, would be that we continue this to the 11th. I just saw heads nod that no weed abatement is going to have to be paid for in the next two weeks. So, and I would, I, I think, I can't tell you guys what to do, but it sounds like if you go for your permits and go for the larger amount, you're still going to be in the clear. So, that's my personal opinion, but I'll, I'll let the council dictate from there. Councilman Capaldi?
So, can I make a motion to table this to our next meeting?
No, it wouldn't be tabled, it would be continue.
Continue to our next meeting.
Yep, so we have a motion to continue the resolution.
I was thinking.
Second by Councilman LeBlanc. Discussion on the motion. Solicitor Angel.
The motion that's being tabled is the amended motion. My recommendation would be that the clerk prepare the amended resolution to be put on the next agenda if it's going to be continued. That way, you're looking at a, at a document that's been changed.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role. Oh, sorry. What's that? Are you from one of the lake associations? Um, sure. Just have to keep discussion to weed abatement.
I know time is of the essence when it comes to weed abatement. I know when they apply for the permits, they apply for.
All right, name an address for the record, please.
Jason Noons, Forbes View Road. I know, like, Lake Tyoog probably does, what, Jerry, 10 acres? Well, you guys probably do about 50, something like that. So, but you guys are in a bit, a worse predicament this year because you're probably going to have to do, play catch-up, like, like we did when we had the passing of the last president. This was tabled from the second week of February. I don't know why there's like confusion about the financing of it now. What have you guys done the last month? Time is of the essence. Like, I'm on Lake Tyoog, he's already closing the dam, and we're starting to like gain some water back. You guys are in a tough predicament because now you're fighting this DEM control, and I hate to say it, maybe you're not going to have your June water or July water. Time is of the essence when it comes to weed control. You don't wait until July and August to do weed control. You do it in May. DEM takes a month, month and a half to approve the permits. This should have been done last month, and now we are this month, and now you're pushing into March. I, I don't understand. These are town-owned lakes. And not for anything, Lake Tyoog has a beach, a town beach, that they collect revenues to. Why are you holding Flat River Road and Lake Tyoog hostage right now?
I, I just asked, is the town going to be sent an invoice to pay for any weed abatement in the next two weeks? The answer I was told.
The answer is no.
No. You've heard from all seven members of this council, a commitment to pay for weed abatement, whether it's from contingency, whether it's from ARPA, wherever it's determined. It's, the, the council wants to pay this bill. The council wants to step up and do this. So, I hear your frustration, but it sounds like weed abatement's still going to get done, and folks here have applied for their permits. So, the process is moving.
Okay, but that's not guaranteeing, I'm on Lake Tyoog, that's not guaranteeing Flat River Road is going to get their 35,000.
Why is it not?
Because why are you going to have a contingency to next month? Just because of the funding? You know the town's going to pay for it. Am I wrong?
Yeah, I think we, I think that folks up here would like to be responsible and know what line item it's going to come out of.
Okay, so, if you take a vote, this should be approved, and then the town is going to figure out what sources this funding is coming from. Am I wrong?
I personally, with my own finances, wouldn't buy something and then figure out how I'm going to pay for it later.
Again, what did we do last month?
I, this isn't my resolution. I can't speak to why the sourcing of the funding wasn't discussed in the last month since we talked about this. All I can say again is, I'm not getting the sense that any weed abatement is going to be held up, and I don't get a sense that the council's going to renege on its commitment. I can't speak for everybody up here, but when I'm listening, this is going to happen.
Well, I think Flat River Road, they're kind of making sure that they're going to have this type of money when they apply for their permit.
What's worse, though, we commit to it and we realize we don't or can't use funds, and then that's, we're, we're trying to, you and I want the same thing.
Right.
The funds have to be there.
Yep.
So, you and I are both singing from the same sheet of music that right now, whether it's we contingently approve it now and cross our fingers there's money, or we take two weeks and we know for a fact there's money.
Well, in two weeks, are we going to get a definite answer?
I'll ask the town manager.
Or is it going to get tabled for the third time? That's my point.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. But we, the fiduciary responsibility of this town is up to the seven people up here, and we need to know where 55,000-plus dollars is going to come from. I can't, again, cannot speak to why this wasn't figured out among folks with respect to this resolution prior to this. As I said, I'm not the sponsor in this resolution. This is, I, between the town manager and the sponsors or whoever, I know this was a question at the last time, but again, we want the same things. Councilman Pasqua?
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. And as the original crafter of the resolution, I have confidence in this council, knowing that we all, have confidence as council that they know the issue here and realize what we need to do. So, I'm okay with just taking a couple of weeks in understanding the exact path of funding here. I wish this was known tonight. I didn't realize it wasn't. But, you know, blame me for that if you, if you wish. But I'm okay with tabling this. I don't believe now, hearing from everybody else, that this is going to delay anything. And I think that we're all going to still be able to mitigate our invasive weeds as we are intending to. It's just, unfortunately, we have to wait two weeks. I don't want, I was hoping to have this passed tonight, of course. But I can understand with the question of ARPA, we do have a responsibility to write this down correctly. Municipal Finance, all these, all these places are paying very close attention to how we operate and how we spend our money and the way we track things. So, we really want to cross our Ts and dot our Is here, and just make sure we write down every penny the way it, the way it needs to be recorded.
Thank you very much. So, we do have a motion in second on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the, the motion to continue? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmatives, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Okay. At this time, I, Mr. Perillo, do we have folks from CLA with us this evening? On Zoom? Okay. I think that's another issue that a lot of folks who are tuning in for this evening. So, I'll turn it over to you to introduce that for our agenda.
So, we have Leslie Zoll from CLA to do an audit presentation on the 2023 audit presentation that was in your packets. She's going to give an explanation of where we are and answer any questions that the council may have. Leslie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, everyone. Do I have permission to share my screen, to share the slides?
Yes, sorry. And for the, the public, we are technically under the Finance Director's report on the agenda for those following along at home.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to present the audit results for the fiscal year 2023 for the Town of Coventry. My agenda tonight is to describe for the council what our audit scope is. I'm going to explain the high-level results of the audit, some of the financial statement highlights within the financial statements, some required communication, and then some additional GASP's Government Accounting Standards Board standards that are coming out that will affect the town in the coming years. As far as our audit scope goes, the Town of Coventry is responsible for the financial statements of the town. We come in to opine on those statements, and we express.
Excuse me, um, just, just one second. Was this sent over, this presentation sent over to the town so that the council could get a copy of this?
I believe Robert sent that, this presentation, yes.
Did we get it? There was an email today? Okay, all right, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, our job is to express opinions on whether those basic financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also express an in relation to opinion on the schedule of federal awards, which is the expenditures for the fiscal year on federal grants. We also express an opinion on compliance with major federal award programs that we test throughout our audit. I think it's important to note that we do not opine on internal control. We are responsible for communicating to those charged with governance, which is the council, any significant deficiencies and material weaknesses we find throughout the audit, but we do not opine on internal controls of the town, either on the financial statements as a whole or over the major federal programs that we test. I, I want to just note for the record here tonight that we were up against a tight timeframe here. I just received the representation letter to issue the report this morning, and I wanted to get these documents to the council before this meeting. So, I am presenting these financial statements as drafts. We do not anticipate any major changes. Like I said, the representation letter came in this morning. We just need a couple of days to publish the actual financial statements. So, we do anticipate that the financial statements will be issued by the end of this week. And we do anticipate that financial statement to be an unmodified opinion on those statements, which means it's a clean opinion. It's what you'd want to receive each year. There are some work that still needs to be done on the federal single audit, so that has not been issued yet. So, I can't speak to any additional findings that we might find during that final testing process. But I will disclose to you tonight any compliance issues that we have found so far in that federal single audit. As far as internal controls, we anticipate two material, well, we have two material weaknesses noted within the financial statements as a whole, and two significant deficiencies over federal programs. I'm going to go through each one of those in more detail as we go through these, this presentation tonight. I mean, I just also want to note that even though these audits are late, in fiscal year 2022, there was six material weaknesses. So, things are being cleaned up and rectified, and we're already starting the 2024 audit work and accumulation of data by the town to get you up to, to timely reporting. So, as far as financial statement highlights, I first like to show this slide. This is part of the management's discussion and analysis within the town's financial statements. This shows a comparison between the last two fiscal years that have been audited. These are on a full accrual basis of accounting. So, the governmental activities column includes all of your governmental funds, with the exception of your pension trust funds. The business-type activities column is your sewer fund. Total net position for the town, for both of those columns included, the total net position is a negative 96.5 million. And that has been, that net position has increased, so, by 6.8 million on the governmental activities column, and then 81,000 on the business-type activities column. Apologize for that. I do just want to note, the governmental activities does have a rather large net position deficit. If you look closer at the financial statements, most of that deficit is caused by your net pension liabilities and net OPEB liabilities. You can see there that long-term liability, liability of 203 million is mostly the cause for that deficit. The next fund financial statement is, this is on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So, revenue recognition is a little bit different within these funds. And we opine on each of these columns separately as individual opinion units. Fund balance for the general fund for 63023 was 15.7 million, and that is down 473,000 from the previous fiscal year. The school restricted unrestricted fund has a negative fund balance of 2.8 million. That's down 1,003 from the previous fiscal year. ARPA fund has a fund balance of 142,000. That 142,000 is investment income related to the funds that were received. You can see there as of 6302023, the unearned revenue in that fund is 8.4 million. So, essentially, as of 6302023, that's what has not been spent on ARPA funds received. That final column, other governmental funds, is a combination of all of your other governmental funds within the town. As a combined total, total fund balance in those smaller funds, 7.3 million. That's increased from the previous fiscal year of 400. That's increased from the previous fiscal year of 485,000. The next basic financial statement relates to the enterprise fund, the sewer fund. Net position is at 26.9 million. That's up 81,000, as I said, from the business type activities schedule earlier. That's up 81,000 from the previous year. And then your internal service fund has a net position of 3.4 million, and that's down 178,000 from last year. And then the last financial statement is your fiduciary funds. Pension Trust Fund has 57.5 million. That's up 7 million from the previous fiscal year as investment is trending upward. Your private purpose trust fund is at 3.5 million. That's up 274,000 from last year. And then custodial funds, which you are holding on behalf of another entity, are, is 22,000. And at this time, I just like to highlight some of the things in the financial statements. The financial statements are, you know, over 180 pages, so it's hard to wrap your arms around it. So just some highlights, your property tax collections are very good at 99.5% for the current, that current year. Your general fund unassigned fund balance is 15.5 million, which is approximately 13.61% of your revised operating budget. And then I've showed here some of your budgetary results here. The general fund revenues came in higher at 249,000, and your expenditures came in lower, which was, you would like to see by 136,000. School restricted revenues came in higher than expected by 837. However, budgetary expenditures did come in higher than expected by 1.2. As far as your net pension liabilities go, and these are shown in RSI 3 within the financial statements, you can see the municipal plan is 44% funded, your police plan is 29% funded, and your school plan 48% funded. Other post-employment benefit obligation is 15.9 million. Before I begin on the required communication, I don't know if you want to have me go through the whole presentation and ask questions after, or ask questions now, what you prefer?
I'd say we go through the whole thing.
Okay, great. So as far as our required communication, in 2023, GASBES 96, Government Accounting Standards Board 96, on what we call SABITAS, subscription-based technology arrangements, we found that the Town of Coventry, that amount is immaterial to the financial statements. So we did not incorporate those standards into the financial statements this year. As you, as you all know, there was a delay in issuing the audit report. We're just now in 2025 issuing 6302023, but as I said, the finance department is trying to catch up and get those records up to date. As far as estimates within the financial statements, your net OPEB liability and your pension liability are based on actuarial assumptions. If those assumptions change, so does that liability. Other estimates that exist within the financial statements are lease receivables and lease payables, and usually that calculation is based on a discount rate, and that discount rate is an estimate. So if that estimate changes, so does those numbers within the financial statements. Capital asset depreciation, useful lives is an estimate if those useful lives change, so just depreciation amounts. And there's also some estimates related to claims payable and allowance for doubtful accounts. We did not have any disagreements with management. We could not resolve. As far as we know, management did not consult other accountants for different, differencing of opinions. As I did mention with GASBES 96, we do have uncorrected misstatements for the implementation of that standard. However, those uncorrected misstatements are immaterial to the financial statements, and we did not have any independence issues as it relates to the Town of Coventry and our firm. Now I'd just like to go over some of the internal control issues. These are repeated from previous fiscal year. One is related to the detailed documentation of capital assets within the sewer fund. We recommend that the town go back and analyze what that number represents to break out the parcels of that sewer number in order to effectively dispose of any of those assets whenever necessary and make sure that that number is accurate. And then on the school side, the school general fund had a negative unassigned fund balance. In terms of the federal single audit, what we know so far is we know that the procurement findings from fiscal year 2022 were not resolved yet in fiscal year 2023. So we did recommend that the town comply with the procurement standards of uniform guidance. Your procurement standards will have to be restated to make sure that they're in compliance with those new guidelines. They should also include policy for reviewing any contract that's paid by federal funding to ensure that they are, the companies that Coventry is working with are not suspended and demurred. And then finally, although these management, what we call management letter comments, although these are not something that necessarily rise to the level of a significant deficiency or a material weakness, they are things that should be noted, things that we noted during the audit that are important for best practices, and just internal control practices of the town that should be reviewed by those charged with governance. I understand that Robert had sent this management letter to you, so you have the drafts, and there is management's responses on how they're going to resolve these recommendations right within the document. So I'm not going to go through each one in length unless you guys have specific questions, but I, just high level, obviously you want to get reporting more timely. We're two years out now. We're almost at the end of 2025, so we want to start getting timely reporting. And that really means creating policies and procedures for that year in close. That year in close procedure needs to include reconciling inter-fund balances, making sure deletions of capital assets are accurate. In the educational grants fund, making sure the revenue recognition is calculated but also posted to the financial management system. So all of these recommendations are related to this year in close process. Pension trust funds for the school plan should be put in the financial management's system and not, not off, off book, if you will. Timely filing of reports again has to do with that timely year in close process. All budgetary overrun should be approved prior to expending those amounts in the, in a budgeted fund. And then accounting procedures manual. Accounting procedure manuals become very useful when you have change in personnel. There was a lot of changes, obviously, in the finance office in recent time. That accounting procedures manual written robustly will help people as they come into the town without that institutional knowledge. And then those middle three, the fraud risk assessment, the fraud tip line, and cybersecurity are really just best practices, things to think of as a council to mitigate risks within the town. And then I just want to end my presentation by just giving you a brief outline of what's coming down the pike in terms of new standards. GASBES 100 is applicable for the 24-year. This is a very specific standard, so if you don't have any changes or error corrections, it won't apply to the town. But if you do, we need to make sure that that's recorded correctly. Compensated absences, this standard did change the way compensated absences are presented. So we will have to go back and look at what you've recorded in the past and make sure it's in accordance with the standard. And CLA will help the finance office with that implementation. GASBES 102 is also applicable for 2025, certain risk disclosures that may need to be added to the footnotes, and we'll discuss that as the time, if the, if the risk arises, if we have those types of disclosures. And then in 2026, there's a new financial reporting model. And this primarily will change the basic look of the proprietary fund statements. They'll look a little bit different in 2026. And then you guys have the slides, the slides that I presented tonight. There's a QR code here. We have a number of state and local government articles on that website that will tell you what's coming down the pike on the industry front. We're having a webinar on Thursday on the executive orders and the federal funding freeze. If you'd like to attend, it's a free, it's a free webinar for anyone who would like to register. And does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for CLA, Councilman LeBlanc?
Comment and then some questions. Just for the public's knowledge, we did not get a draft of these statements until 8:19 last night. So to think that the council could go through 195 pages and ask really good questions tonight is kind of not possible. One question for CLA is, for the council members who may not know and for the public listening, can you just define what a restatement is?
A fund balance from the previous fiscal year would change based on a number of different factors. That's what a restatement is.
Thank you. Just for the public and for the council, on page 106 out of 195 of the PDF, there was a note that called out a restatement. And I piqued my interest, so I looked back at the FY '22 financials, the FY '21 financials, and the FY '20 financials. And every single statement in the financial statement included a restatement. And I'm just curious from CLA's perspective as to why we might have missed these during the audit, because I try to utilize issued statements from third parties to base my financial decisions based off of. But it's hard when there's pretty significant restatements made each year. So I was just curious as to what might be driving these restatements every single year in the statements.
Well, the fiscal year 2023, the restatement was only moving one fund from the non-major column to the major column. It did not restate the total fund balance.
Okay. Do we know what caused that during the last year's audit, why we might have missed that?
So that's actually, we early implemented GASBES 100 in that there's a calculation on what becomes a major fund based on the number of assets and liabilities, expenditures, and revenues in relation to the total. So it just has to do with where the numbers showed up this year and whether they were major or not major. It was not necessarily an error or a misstep by anyone in the fiscal year 2023 audit.
Got it. I just call it out because it seems like it's happening every single year. So just, it was page 106 out of 195 for the restatement, President Lima. And then from CLA's perspective, if everything on your PBC listing for the FY '24 audit is delivered to you on time, what is the earliest that you think that FY '24 statements will get issued?
I, I can't necessarily speak to when the team can come out. It all depends on when the information is presented. So we are going to do everything that we possibly can to schedule people once we know the information is there. It usually takes two to three weeks of fieldwork and then a month after that to finalize the audit. And that, again, is contingent on information back and forth and when that information can be readily available.
Got it. Hopefully, it's sooner rather than later, because then we're going to be at the end of FY '25. And we're just going to restart this whole issue. As I know, I'm preaching to the choir, trust me. Totally get it. And then my final point, just from an independent perspective. So if the Town of Coventry was to sell all of their assets, would we still be in debt and by how much? We were to cease operations on, I guess, going back to these issue statements, which were through June 30th of 2023. So if we were to cease operations on June 30th of 2023, how much would the taxpayers of Coventry owe, at least according to the financial statements? Meaning that we sold all of our assets and paid off all of our debt. Would we still have debt left over? And what would the number be?
Your net position is 96 million, your deficit.
Thank you. So that means that if we sold all of our assets, we would still be almost $100 million in debt. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I would like to clarify, though, that pension liability may, that estimate may change if you were to sell everything. It may not be at the estimate it is currently, because that's, that's an actuarial valuation, a number.
I would completely agree with you on that. When you're comparing our issued financial statements to the other 38 towns and cities in Rhode Island, about 65% of them actually have a surplus positive net position. We are actually one of the localities that do not have, we actually are in a deficit. So we're talking about a $5.9 million dam issue tonight. We're talking about potential fire departments getting added that will bring on who knows how many millions of dollars on top of our already 96.5 million deficit. That's why I called it out. Thank you.
Other comments from members of the council, Vice President Verducci?
So just the same range of pages, Councilman LeBlanc was on page 105, where we discussed the school deficits, our statement. Just trying to interpret the number you have, I see the parentheses with the 454,000. I just want to see if I'm interpreting this correctly. Is that an additional deficit on top of what we thought was the multi-year deficit? Just explain that number.
On page 105, I've not seen the number you're talking about.
Favorable unfavorable column.
So that's just this current year's budget versus actual. It's not a cumulative number. This is fiscal year '23 results.
All right. I think our finance director's coming up at some point. Well, I think I might have one for him, too. Yeah.
If I can. So I think the number you're looking at, you're showing on page 105, it says that the school department on a budgetary basis of accounting ran a deficit of 1.1 million for fiscal '23. The cumulative deficit, which I believe was covered in the school unrestricted column, was roughly 2.8 million.
Correct.
That means prior to this 1.1, they came into the year at about 1.7. So the numbers that have been discussed in the past, you know, saying cumulative through June 30th to 2003 is roughly 2.8 million. They're projecting that their fiscal 2024 audit is going to show the school department with an additional $3 million deficit, which brings you to the cumulative deficit of 5.8 million that they anticipate at this time.
And that number is still unchanged from last-
As we know, that's unchanged, correct. They are projecting, as you've seen- They are projecting, as you've seen, the school department, they're projecting fiscal two thousand twenty five to finish with a surplus of one hundred forty four thousand.
And then, speaking of uh what we're looking at right now in front of us, do these documents, as they sit right now, do anything for me as far as satisfying the requirements for municipal finance or bond ratings, things like that? Are they still considered not final?
Yeah, so as was discussed by Ms. Zoll, we expect to have the final report by the end of the week. Um it's just going through, my understanding, going through the final processing at CLA. As soon as we receive that report, it will be submitted to the Department of Municipal Finance, be submitted to the Audit General's Office, and then we will start the process with Moody's to get the bond rating restored.
But as of tonight, that can't be started and won't be until we get the watermark removed and whatever other piece of paper we need.
That's correct, it should be this.
Thanks.
Yep.
Other discussion from members of the council? So I do wanna um make a couple of comments, maybe have some questions too. My comments are with respect to the management letter. I'm seeing it's kind of broken recordy in terms of things that we should, we were told we should have implemented, but but didn't. And I get we're stacking past due audits at this point. But it looks like in the first um that first slide uh for the management letter section of the report, the year-end closing procedures, inter-fund balance, capital assets, educational grant funds and pension trust fund. We're not, we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing there or what others are doing, we're following best practice. Are there, are there other towns that already have these policies written that we can take and mold for our purposes so we can get these in place uh to enforce? I might be in favor of getting a draft of those, referring them to our new council finance committee to really dig into those and work through them and then bring them back to the council. Um so that that would be my first question. My other question is um how much do fraud risk assessments generally cost? That recommendation that um we should have one of those done to identify vulnerabilities? That would be one of my questions. And then I'm also curious to know um what this this transfer of four hundred ninety seven plus thousand was that was for that was out of compliance with what CLA determines best budget practices?
Okay, so I'll try to remember your questions and answer them. Starting with the last one, the four hundred ninety seven thousand. As you may recall, with the two thousand twenty one audit coming out and then also the twenty two audit coming out, both on the school department side and the town side, we identified that there were a number of funds, so capital projects funds, special revenue funds, that had cumulative deficits. Those deficits have existed for many years. So during discussions at previous council meetings, we talked about closing out those fund deficits into the general fund, because
I thought that was lower than that. I knew it was four hundred something, but I didn't think it was almost five hundred.
Yeah, that that was the total for the town. The school department, you may recall, had a capital projects fund that had a deficit of almost nine hundred thousand in it. That, again, if there's no funding source for those deficits, you're just hiding a deficit that really should be part of your general fund. So we thought it'd be prudent to, you know, let's see where we stand financially, both on the town side and the school side. So let's close out all those fund deficits, bring them into the general fund. CLA during, in their management letter comment, you could read, you know, they interpreted that as being a non-compliance essentially, not material, but a non-compliance with the state law saying we should not exceed the federal expenditures approved in the budget. I disagreed, um thinking that, you know, we didn't over expend, we basically transferred fund balance from our general fund to the other funds. So it wasn't an over expenditure of the current appropriations, but I certainly understand their point and for bringing it to the council's attention. Okay, I focused too much on that. Let me go back.
Well, let me answer the question on fraud risk assessment.
Yeah.
With fraud risk assessments, you can do a number of things that would either lessen your scope or expand your scope. Typically, if you're gonna go into one or two departments, it's like twenty grand, give or take. But again, you could do that in-house if you wanted, you could, you know, hire an outside firm. Um and you can um also decide the scope. So if if the council decides, you know, that the tax office might be the riskiest department, let's just go in there and do a risk assessment on that one department versus doing all the departments altogether. So there's some options for you, which would obviously um delineate the the price tag on that.
Yeah, and I think just just to add to that, right? Internally, we should be doing our fraud risk assessments. So whether it's in the finance office, also members of the town council, you know, at the start of each audit, every member of the town council and school committee received a letter, a pre-audit letter, you know, related to the planning. At that point, if you identify or if you think there's items that should be high risk, you can convey that to the auditors and they can look at those items. So it's really us all internally taking a look and saying, okay, what do we think the high risk are? And to be honest with you, that's one of the items that we plan on doing in my office, it's just a matter of prioritizing, obviously trying to get financial statements, get those completed. My goal is, in the springtime, getting the members of my department, we're gonna visit each department and try to get details exactly how they're processing some payments. So whether it's DPW, rec department, we're gonna vis- visit every department and just go through their processes for collecting money, because we don't, we don't have a centralized collection agency in town, right? Every department has their own collections. So we have to make sure what are their controls with each of those departments and seeing how we can tighten the controls to help mitigate the risk of something happening. And I think you're you're all
Then the answer to the first question was on whether or not there's policies out there. I would suggest Robert go um to the Rhode Island Government Finance Officers Association. Sometimes they have resources there that might have examples or templates. Um I actually think the state of Rhode Island might have some templates as well.
And just add to that, it's it's really a matter of us trying to develop those policies internally. And that's what we're in the process of doing within the tax collectors office, the accounting office. You know, little by little, what I've always stated to, you know, my clients over the years, you start by just loose leaf pieces of paper documenting how, what are your procedures? What are your procedures for processing payroll? What are your procedures for, you know, cash receipts, processing payables? You keep documenting that, and after a while, you're gonna have a number of pages just just documents all the detail. And again, I think the the biggest reason for having that policy, or twofold, is one, it's gonna help you identify some high-risk areas, right? As you're reading through the policy, you might say, geez, why are we doing this? Why aren't we doing that? But then more so, when you do have staff turnover, we have a manual in place that people can come in and, you know, pick it up, read through it and really know how to process transactions and see how things flow. Again, it's not, my opinion, it's not something you can create overnight. It takes some time to put together, but little by little, you start accumulating the data and we'll have that manual in place. Now, keep in mind, you know, a lot of the comments that you're seeing on this management letter, they are repetition. You know, they're repeating from previous years, because we're years behind. Obviously, my opinion, you know, they have, they're reporting on two thousand three at two thousand twenty three at this time. So obviously, something they're reporting that happened in twenty three, we're getting, we're finding out about it now. We're not gonna have something in place, so I would expect you're gonna see most of these comments in twenty four. Hopefully, in twenty five, we're gonna see, you know, a number of them disappear. But I could tell you, as far as the year-end cutoff procedures, I can't speak for the school, although I think they're coming a long way and they're getting, you know, new personnel they have over there will help it um close easier easier. But I know Councilman LeBlanc probably, I won't say anything, but Councilman LeBlanc may disagree with me, but I think, you know, my goal is, you know, as soon as this twenty four audit's done, we're gonna roll into twenty five. Our books at the town will be closed on, you know, September fifteenth, because as you may know, government auditing, we have to keep our books open for at least sixty days, because we have a revenue recognition rule. So by the time I have those final tax collections in the end of August, we can then close our books to get rid of, have the twenty five order completed. So I think we have significant procedures in place, most importantly, having transactions recorded on a daily basis, reconciliations completed on a day, on a monthly basis. So I think we'll be in good shape.
We need these policies in place yesterday, because I think Councilman LeBlanc's the only one, other other person up here who can attest to this. But especially in our early years on the council, prior to this new town administration, it was the wild freaking west in here. There's no policy, there's no record, it's just, it's insane to me. I know we're getting there now and we're we're trying to make up for years of neglect. But we really need to get those in there. My last comment, uh it's it's not a question, it's a comment, is um going forward, I really expect that whoever is doing our auditing services for us, I I need, I would, I want them to be more um, I guess, on the case of our town employees. I want them to manage this process. I felt like it was too much fifty fifty. I personally would like it, the audit firm, to really kind of, I don't know, crack the whip and really be in touch with us often. I I understand that we've been waiting on certain information, but in this part of the year, if this was the fall, I could see why we're taking so long, but we're now in the new year, we're approaching spring. We're one of the only folks who's, you know, serially behind on our audits. And I just, I still, I still don't understand why we're, we don't, we don't have technically really draft statements tonight. So um just going forward, and I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but I really want an audit firm that it's gonna be tough on us and keep them and push us to to meet expedient deadlines. And uh I just, I feel like it was more of a back and forth of, well, I got this off my plate and we're waiting on this person. Oh, no, we're waiting on this person. No, I asked this person and um we we gotta be better about that. So I'm I'm I hopefully, as we get twenty three and twenty four done, we can get on a better track. But um it's just my thoughts.
I can, yeah, if I can just comment on that. I do wanna thank CLA, because they've done a great job, they've been patient with us. You know, and from an audit firm's perspective, because I've been in their shoes, you can't audit something that you don't have. You know, and when I sit at these meetings or it's school, you know, school meetings, you know, we talk about the financial statements being late. Their job with the financial statements is to audit the financial statements, come back and provide an opinion. If this council or the school committee is relying on the audit to know where you stand financially, I think everybody's misguided. You should know where you stand financially from your budget versus actual report you get on a monthly basis, quarterly basis. You know, I stood in front of you, I think, last August, told you where I think we were gonna finish fiscal two thousand twenty four. I would expect the audit, when you get that, to be very close to that number. You know, maybe slightly different, because additional adjustments I've made. The goal is to give the auditors trial balances, draft financials, exhibits, whatever we're providing them, that they don't have to make adjustments to. And that's where I think you're getting, that wasn't the case in the past. So I certainly don't want CLA to take any fault of this. They've done everything they could, and I'm I'm not saying you, you are blaming them, so that's not my intent. But as far as like their schedule, their schedule's obviously booked. There's not many firms that are still doing government audits in the state of Rhode Island, especially for larger municipalities. So currently, I believe with the fiscal twenty four audits out of thirty nine cities and towns, I think twenty one of them are on extension. So to think that they're just sitting there doing nothing, taking care of us, I'm sure they're working on some other clients that are on extension at the same time. So, you know, our goal is to hopefully, you know, they have their audit teams. So the goal is that they get all the twenty four information. You know, we do have the prepared by client listings where they're requesting data. As soon as we can provide all that information to them, they'll come out here, conduct their fieldwork, and it should be turned around pretty quickly.
I get it, but respectfully, it's not, it's not my job to care about what else is on their plate when you have a rating. That's what I'm concerned about, is our ability to do significant work to benefit this town going forward. Don't have it. I I totally hear what you're saying, not trying to throw anyone under the bus. I just, I wanna make sure that we're we're doing all that we can to bring this up to date, so.
And the goal was to, you know, have a final financial statement too this evening. Obviously, they have their um, you know, national level review that has to take place. It goes to their national office, they do external reviews, which, why you only received this last night? We got the final update, we don't anticipate any changes to this. And at our last call with the Audit General, it was told that this would get on the agenda for the end of the month. So that's why it was presented to you in a draft form and not final. But as soon as that email comes in my email later this week, you'll have it within moments.
Uh Councilman LeBlanc?
While I totally appreciate your comment about wanting to use your internal statements, your budget actuals. I've been on the council for almost, it's been my fifth year. And I think for almost two years of those, I was asking for a balance sheet and I was getting laughed at by the finance director. And then I think um it was the audits that actually uncovered the school five point eight million dollar deficit. They originally had told us four hundred, then it went to six, then it went to eight, then it went to three point something, then it went to four point eight, and now it's at five point eight. So I, in my opinion, while I appreciate your comment about wanting to just solely rely on yours, I also appreciate third-party independent um statements to help me with my financial decisions. So just wanted to call that out. And then nothing against you getting a draft last night. Um I think, I know when um I was part of leadership, we had stated that if it's, if the material is not ready by when the the agenda gets filed, it shouldn't be an agenda item topic for that meeting, because it's not giving the council enough time to review all the materials. Um I I think, I think you had sent the PowerPoint for her presentation yesterday. We got the drafts late last night, it's a hundred and ninety five pages long. For us to ask educated questions, in my opinion, all material should be ready on the date that the agenda is filed, which would be Friday. So just wanted to clarify a lot of things that we just said.
Any further council discussion? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Zoll.
Thank you.
Moving on, um we're going to go to, are there folks here for for the land trust piece? All right, thank you. Uh we're gonna go up to the appointment, town council appointments, town of Coventry Land Trust. We have one opening remaining, um and we have two candidates who've put their name forward, Gerald Lepain. And please correct me if I'm wrong, um Chinoah Cahoon, okay? Is Gerald here? No? So I guess if you wanna come forward um and just introduce yourself, just state your name and address for the record and um talk about your experience and why you'd like to serve or
Chinoah Cahoon, um address to
Yep.
Hard Driftwood Drive, Coventry. Um I I saw the post come out about people who are passionate about nature and land trust, so and everyone was welcome to apply. So I immediately got excited. I live in the land trust, I hike, I run a women's hiking group. Um we have about, close to nineteen hundred women that are in there. I do a lot of family hikes, so I host a lot of hikes in our land trust. So honestly, I know every inch of Rhode Island, I've been through it, so I'm very avid. Um my degrees are in wildlife conservation, conservation and biology. I'm a physical science teacher, zoology teacher in Johnson High School. So my passion is the outdoors, it's always has been. I lived here my whole life, grew up in Coventry, went to Coventry High School. Say, I I know a lot about the species that are water here, so I feel like I have a lot to offer to the land trust.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Horton, is Mr. Lepen, Mr. Lepain potentially on Zoom? I just wanna be very sure on this. Okay. What's the pleasure of the council this evening?
So I make a motion to appoint Ms. Cahoon. As I stated at the last meeting, I ranked my top three and she was in my top three. So I move her recommendation, I think it's a one-year appointment.
The final seat is a one, yep.
So I recommend her uh and nominate her for the position.
Second motion from Councilman Brown, second from Councilman Pasqua, any discussion? Hearing none, clear, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you very much. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. We won't judge you, we won't, yeah, um we'll egg your house. Um, we'll egg your house. Yeah. Um, I'm gonna continue to bounce. Um, our relatively new Parks and Rec Director is here, and he's been waiting patiently to give us an update on playgrounds in Coventry. I had asked for this item, because prior to Ms. Blumenthal's departure, we had actually won grant funds with DEM, and we had to do minimal match, and from what I remember, we have, I think, three new playgrounds that could come online this year, but Mr., how do you say your last name?
Savigny.
Savigny is going to tell us, so, thank you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Um, yeah, when I came on board, I was fortunate enough to, uh, the previous director, Rena, had secured funding for the three playgrounds, for Quidnick, for Harris, and for Giblin. Um, so Quidnick being the biggest, uh, it's through CDB, CDBG funding. Um, that entails a new playground as well as a brand-new basketball court over there. Um, so I identified that as pretty much the priority. Been working with the planning director and the CDBG director. Um, so when I came on board, I started to look at Quidnick, um, and touch base with playground designers, touch base with basketball court designers, start to get prices, start to get ideas, uh, and then I, I realized that, uh, talking to some colleagues of mine in the, in the town, outside of the town, um, that there's an opportunity there to kind of re-envision that space. As if you are familiar with it, the basketball court is right off the parking lot. There's a grade difference, which then goes up to where the former playground was. Um, so if you were gonna just put a basketball court there and then put a new playground there, um, you could do it, but you start to get into accessibility issues, you start to get into access issues for our maintenance guys. Um, so, uh, right in, in talking with the planning director, in talking with CDBG, um, we decided it was a good idea to get the services of a landscape architect, which we have that out right now, is an IF, uh, I used to call it an RFP, an IFB. Um, that is gonna be open until March fourteenth, I believe. Um, so I think that's gonna give us an opportunity to look at that space, um, re-envision that space. The playground is going to be probably the center activity over there. Um, we wanna use the basketball court for our summer league, uh, that's an expansion for us. We can offer, uh, take in more kids in our, in our very popular basketball league, but really, people are gonna go in that neighborhood, it's a very tight neighborhood, um, that's gonna be, that facility right there is gonna be within walking distance for a lot of residents. So I think that, and you have CCAP right there, which offers a lot of services to families. So you're going to have a lot of use of that playground there. That should probably be upfront, so that's kind, I wanted to explore that possibility, and that will be what we'll explore with the landscape architect. Maybe, you have the grade differences there, so maybe moving that playground closer to the, to the parking lot, um, and then putting the basketball court behind there, that's something that, you know, we'll discuss with the landscape architect, but, um, that's where we stand with that one. So, uh, once we get a landscape architect secured, we get some design work, I'd be happy to, you know, I wanna get input from a lot of different sources, um, to make sure that, um, because this is something that should be there for a long time. Playground structure should have a life of twenty, thirty years, so I wanna get the right playground, uh, company in place, not one. From Cranston, I've seen some playground companies come in that the structures don't really last. Um, so I've talked to a couple of companies that offer some pretty good warranties, um, you know, so in addition to getting a landscape, um, architect in to design that space, they will off, also offer some construction documents that we can then bid out, the, uh, the basketball court, uh, and the playground. Uh, my hope is that the basketball court, um, will be, um, uh, it's a certain construction, uh, in, involving, um, concrete bars going through, so it offers a little more, um, uh, durability over the years, so we don't have cracking like we currently do at Payne and some other facilities. Um, so that's where Quidnick stands. So we got that bid open until the seventeenth of, uh, of March. We'll make a decision very quickly on which, uh, firm we will go with. Uh, we'll move on that, and then we will, um, get a design in place and then get some bid documents going. Uh, my goal is to have that project closed out, and I've communicated that with the planning director and the CDBG, have it closed out by the end of this year. So we're gonna try and move pretty quickly on this. Um, so that's number one, that's the big one, because that's CDBG money, um, wanna get that wrapped up.
Um, if I could, I, I just live in that neighborhood. Um, in my opinion, and I don't know how intimately aware you've become of this yet, but the baseball field there is way too big, and it's only used for T-ball. I mean, the kids are not even going past the infield, and I've always felt like that was such an, like an awful use of that space. So I'm assuming you've already assessed that, and you're gonna, I would move that fence in, and that gives you way more opportunity over there. Um, maybe there's a future to consider for dog park in there, because right now, people bring their dogs into that, and kids are sliding around in dog feces, because they don't listen. So, um, just something to consider as someone who sees that used all the time.
Yeah.
So I'm very excited about this, so thank you.
Okay, I, I definitely appreciate that suggestion. I have looked at that ball field. That infield needs some work, there's, um, uh, so we've, in the, within our department, have discussed how we can renovate that, um, make it, because I, I do recognize that it's just smaller kids that play there. Grass infield and smaller kids generally, uh, you know, are not, don't go well together. They hit the ball, it dies in the, in the infield. Um, there is the ability to kind of expand out, uh, if there's money left over after the, uh, the basketball court and the playground, uh, you know, those costs are fixed. If there's either some kind of other landscaping around, if there's something to do, renovate the, the baseball field, um, those are all on the table. Those are all, since they're within that property, then those can be addressed as well, so, yeah. Um, so then the other ones we have are Harris, uh, which was funded through a DEM grant, that is an eighty-twenty match, so DEM, uh, we were awarded a hundred thousand, town will put in twenty thousand. Um, so I think everything's gonna branch off of Quidnick. Once we can get bid documents for Quidnick, um, can kind of use that as a template, uh, start getting Harris, uh, bid out that Harris, and also Giblin, which is a capital project, bid out that one as well. Um, we'll obviously go through all the proper procurement, um, but it might be nice, I, I, if we can get the same company, if it works out, to do all three. Um, I think having a uniform, um, company, uniform parts, uh, swappable, not necessarily, I'm not talking slides and playground parts, but fixtures, screws, bolts, those kind of things. Uh, you have to buy them from one source instead of it's one company, it's another company. Um, and they can tailor, playground companies can tailor them to the neighborhood. So what is, at Quidnick is not necessarily a cut and paste that would be put at Harris, is not the cut and paste that would then be put at Giblin. Each site has a particular need, each site has a particular population, um, so it, it, we're not gonna look at uniformly what's at one is gonna be just a copy paste onto the other. It's, it's working with the playground companies, whichever ones those may be, if they're all the same, if they're different, um, and, and getting a look that is unique to the area, to the, to what's being used. You know, Giblin, you're gonna have a combination of those using the ball field and those walking in, um, you know, uh, Har, uh, Quidnick is gonna be, I assume, I'm gonna anticipate a lot of walkers from the neighborhood coming through, children in the neighborhood, families in the neighborhood coming through, so, um, so that's where we stand now. Um, just continue to plug away on, on all of those, uh, you know, try and get them wrapped up, if not by the end of this fiscal, this, um, calendar year, then maybe into a little bit of the next one, but they are definitely still priorities, still chipping away at them. Um, we have until, for Harris, we have until the end of twenty twenty-six to expend that money, to go to the DEM with all of our receipts, with all the paperwork, and get all that in. Um, I've been in communication with them. We issue, um, regular reports that they require, so we've been in touch with them, so everything's moving along. Um, so we're, they still are a priority and very excited about getting these, getting these built.
Uh, Councilwoman Capaldi.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good. Um, so we had a conversation, um, I think it was the end of the summer last year, and I told you I had a conversation with Rena, probably right after we finished budgeting for, for twenty twenty-five. She said that there was still money left over for a request, and it was the playground on Ginger Trail. And I was promoting that, because she said she was gonna do it. It was, it's not a big playground. Did you go take a look at it yet?
I did, yes.
So you know how little it is?
It looks like it's, it's small. It looks like it's probably for two-to-five-year-olds, if I'm?
That's the neighborhood. That's, that's, that's where my daughter grew up.
Yeah.
Um, so she did, she promised me that. What are you gonna do about it?
Um, I, I know we had a conversation, I think we can continue to have a conversation about that. Um, so we can look at what the, what the needs are over there, um, and assess, you know, I can take a closer look at it and see the, the age, I'm not sure the age of it, I'm not sure when it was built, and the exact condition, so.
The town cuts that grass. I mean, it's, it's very maintained by the town, because I used, my house looked over the, um, the, the, um, playground. But yeah, it's not much, but it would mean a lot to that neighborhood, and Rena did promise it to me. She said there was money left over. So I don't know if there's still money left over.
That was not communicated, she did not communicate that to me. She was very clear in the other three, that one she did not.
So I would love for you to take a look at it, and then maybe you can plan it for this budget season for next year.
Okay.
That'd be great. She said it's not, it's not a big job, because it's small. So it's something, you know?
Right.
That would be pretty feasible to do.
And I think you and I can have a conversation. Do we wanna, do you wanna keep it that small? Is that neighborhood still, you know, for, because you, you can build playgrounds for two-to-five-year-olds, you can build them for five-to-twelve-year-olds. Equipment should not be you built for two to twelve, based on certain type of equipment. Some two-to-five-year-olds are not capable of handling certain equipment, so we can.
Yeah, we'll talk about it. That'd be wonderful.
The needs in that neighborhood, population in that neighborhood, and?
A big need in that neighborhood too is a dog park. Most of the dogs go into that playground.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll get together and talk.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, Councilman Brown.
Something on that line. I was approached by a prominent business in town that would like to have a buyer bench program. A lot of our parks don't have benches to sit on, and they would like to purchase them and maybe add a little bit more of a premium and raise money for Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
Um, but maybe that's something town-wide. There is a lot of parks out there, but you go, you stand there, there might be a telephone pole to sit on that's laying horizontally, but there is really maybe not a quality bench. Um, I think that's something to pursue, Scott, and there might be some interest out there for people to buy them.
Okay.
Anything else for the director on playgrounds? Vice President Verducci?
I, just a quick question, trying to learn how we're doing things here in the town. Uh, you mentioned a couple different procurements. What kind of methodology are you using there? Are you developing specs? Are you MPA? Are you, are you glomming onto any other kind of agreements, or just wanna make sure everybody has a flow here for their, uh, their bidding?
Yep. Uh, it, it specifically speaking to the landscape architect bid that we have right now, that is a bid. Um, then we will get construction documents out of that, and we will bid that as well. So, um, for this, these particular ones, because for playground equipment, it's, it's a little hard to compare apples to apples, because everyone's, everyone's product is a little bit different. You can go buy a table from Home Depot or Lowe's, and it's the same table. Buy a piece of playground equipment from company A is different from company B. Um, so I think getting a, a, going out to bid for that would be, with a design, is, is the way to go for that.
Anything else from the council? All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, I think at this point, um, let's, let's get Mr. McGee out of here. Uh, Resolution B twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five fifteen, to approve a purchase of a Ford F-350 pickup truck with plow and sander. On page twenty to thirty-three in our packets. Do I hear motion to approve?
Make that motion?
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilman the Blank, Mr. McGee.
Good evening. Uh, this pickup truck is to replace one of the ones that's out of service at this time, and it's a three fifty, there's a sander and plow, purchased through Sourcewell, which is the National Cooperative, to get the pricing for that, and it's within, be paid for within the, uh, fair street development fees, the impact fees.
Questions from the council? Councilman Brown.
Is an F-350 heavy enough, Kevin? It just, I see them, sand is loaded, and the truck is way down in the back. I, you know, should we go in with a higher capacity?
If we went, if we went to the next size, which we, we have the five fifties?
Yeah.
Are the bigger trucks. We have some of the roads that we can't get down. We need some of the small ones like Katy Street, and we need to have the smaller trucks to get around some of those areas, so we only have a couple that we have, I think it's just three that we utilize. This is one, one of our trucks is out of service at this point, so.
How big's the sander, what, two and a half yard?
No, it's a one point eight.
Yeah, so that, that's quite a bit of weight on, uh, that truck. I just, I just see him going down the road. I mean.
Trying to get, trying to get as much productivity as we can.
All right. Just wanted to put it out there.
Any discussion on the plow? Um, Councilman Blank.
Uh, definitely in favor of this. Um, just a question. Um, so this is gonna be a new vehicle. Can you just, for my knowledge and for anybody listening, um, discuss like the maintenance plan, uh, and tracking related to vehicles that we have? Because, um, I, I know the last snowstorm, I was told that eight to ten of our trucks were down, so I was just curious as to what our maintenance program consists of.
Yes, maintenance, well, actually, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. It was actually twelve vehicles that were down at the last storm.
Twelve?
Twelve trucks that were down, and those are not things for maintenance. Those items were defus, def units, drive shafts that were snapped, uh, parts that we could not get at that during the storm. In addition to the, uh, in addition to the trucks, we also had nine employees out, whether they were in the hospital, whether they had operations, whether they were doing pneumonia, RSV, I didn't have to worry. We pulled people from every division that we had, whether it be the building department, vehicle maintenance, actually put somebody out there. We had sanitation drivers, and we were still short. We got trucks from the school department, uh, Parks and Recreation allowed us to use a truck. We can't have that many trucks now. We had five routes that were not covered during the storm, and people would go back and try to just open it up. And we had some comments I, I, I heard about from social media, uh, about the, the conditions of the, uh, snow plowing. Snow plowing during the storm, we, like I said, we had five routes that were not covered, so we had people going in and out, trying to open them up. People were taking photos, saying, hey, look at, look at the condition of the road at eight o'clock in the morning. We were here there until one o'clock in the afternoon, getting them cleaned up. By the time they left at one o'clock, everything was cleaned. But you can't have a stop, make an assessment in the middle of the storm, when it's not completed, when we don't have the people. We got it done. People get, the people were there, and some of the people are very appreciative of the effort. Our people put in blood, sweat, and tears to try to get the job done. Nineteen hours they were out there, and came back in again at three o'clock in the morning on Monday to take care of the, the ice that was building up because of the, uh, rain. Yeah, we have, we have a maintenance, uh, the maintenance, we, we have five mechanics that are working on this. We do not have an asset management program to control, to control that, which has been in my capital budget for the last three years, and it'll be in this year's budget again. Uh, but we're tracking, we're tracking down all the parts that we're spending. We have some of the older equipment, that's anywhere from two thousand and four to two thousand and twelve, that are obsolete, that we can't even get parts for. I got two trucks that the floors came out of it, that rotted away, because, and then you get, uh, exhaust coming through. I had to take those trucks out of service. And we have, we have trucks that are beyond their lives, their lifestyle. We're doing a, a good job on sanitation trucks, we're getting back. Uh, somebody commented today about the sanitation. We've got the trash being collected every week. Recycling is behind. Tomorrow morning, we're going out with three trucks. Three trucks out of nine are in service. So, yes, we're gonna be, be, uh, behind again tomorrow, but those gentlemen that are, and women that are working in that department are working later, working up on Saturday to get caught up by the end of the week. Recycling and trash are done. Trash is done on a daily basis. Recycling is the only thing that gets backed up, because we don't have the vehicles, so. We're working with them. I've got confirmation today that we have, uh, April, I have one truck coming, May I have one truck coming, and the third truck is coming in July. That's, that's how fast we're gonna be able to get those.
Appreciate the insight. Um, I would like to discuss more, but I think we'll go off topic, so I think I'll just leave it at that.
Uh, Councilwoman Capaldi.
Hi, Gavin. Um, so I know the storm, we all know the storm that, um, uh, Councilman the Blank was talking about. I wanna bring you, the week prior to that, I spoke to the?
If I could, I understand, but can we move the resolution along, and then we can move to the report? If I could, I understand, but can we move the resolution along and then we can move to the report? Yeah, let's just, I just wanna, the purchase of the truck. Do we want to purchase a plow truck?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on purchasing the plow truck? Uh, Vice President Verducci?
Just a quick question. Uh, do we have a, a vehicle replacement plan? It's just not funded?
We have a vehicle replacement plan. It's in capital budget every year, it's just not funded.
Okay, and do we have a fleet manager?
We have a, a lead mechanic who takes care of our, one of our office staff documentation forms.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion on the resolution? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven and the affirmative, zero and the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, so I know this is an item on the town manager's report. I know that Council, Councilwoman Capaldi requested to discuss this. So if we could just, now we can go back to the snowstorm and operations. I just wanna keep the agenda moving, folks. I'm not trying to be mean.
Yes ma'am.
On the report of the town manager, discussion of February snowstorm and DPW operation status. Council over communications, town plowing operations and equipment.
Okay, hi Kevin. Take two. Um, so I wanna take you prior to the storm that, um, Councilman LeBlanc was talking about. I had a conversation with, with the town manager because I had a couple of people from your department call. And that's where I was first, I first learned about the 10 to 12 trucks that were down. And, um, when, after speaking to Dan, he, he actually was in a meeting with you and, um, Director Finance talking about what we're gonna do, cause the big storm. Great, that's awesome. Um, so we understand there's money that needed to be allocated for potential vendors. So why do vendors not come in and help when we're down 10 trucks and then nine people are out sick? And there's still no one riding trucks to plow?
This is the first year that we have any allocation for, for vendors. Ever been allowed vendors throughout all the years I've been here. We have one vendor that signed up for us. He wasn't available for the storm. His truck was down and I didn't have his truck. So I had both Western Coventry trucks that go on the other side of 102. Both people were out, so I had to have somebody else from here go over there and take care of two routes while they were doing their, their town farm, you know, farm road. It was, I had one person just floating, trying to pick up the pieces in between as this was going on. So again, it's not, vendors aren't always the, the answer. Hopefully we have the, the allocation for funding this coming year. We will go out earlier. We're, we're competing with the state and the state has a better funding. We're trying to match their, their numbers so that we can get somebody here. We got, like I said, we got one and I had a gentleman just contact me last week about a pickup truck. He's got an eight-foot pickup truck, eight-foot blade and a stone. He's not gonna do very much, but it's, it's a body, it's a truck. So we might bring him on as a, uh.
So do they need to have certain qualifications other than, other than that? Do they need anything else to plow?
They have to have a truck.
Well, of course.
Well, it's not easy and most of them want to have the commitment that every storm they're gonna go out and have that. They, they put the money into that truck, they want that truck to be able to go out. They're not gonna sit back waiting for me to call them, oh, I need you today, you know, or, okay, so I don't, I don't need you.
Do you guys advertise for these vendors? Can you advertise, do you start advertising in the summer?
It's actually early, early fall you start something.
So do you still need vendors now as we speak? Anyone watching this, um, council meeting out there that has a CDL license?
In a truck.
In a truck with a plow?
Match the state rates.
Will match the state rates? Please call, um, Kevin McGee?
Issue, I may, the issue is a vendor wants to be guaranteed they're going to work. I can't guarantee them that. Because if every union position is filled, then all the plowing, plowing, uh, scheduled slots are filled. So then we don't need any vendors. So that's the, that's the tough thing is that we have a vendor list.
You know, hey, if this guy is, this person out there, or woman, is not working and you need somebody and they don't care that it's not for 10 weeks, they should be, there should be a call list of people that will work. Because it's been bad the past couple of weeks. I'll admit to that too, living, living here. And you understand because.
Again, even though the storm, storm's only been three and a half inches, it's still a lot of cleanup, a lot of ice that has to be cleaned up. And again, once, just because the light comes up, let me turn the light bulb on. We're still there seven, eight, nine hours after the fact, getting it cleaned up. If, if somebody would do that, that's fine, but that's just not the way. I've been doing this for 30 years and a vendor wants to be committed to a certain amount. And the union will grieve if I don't take some of our drivers because I got the route being covered by a vendor.
So where are we with the trucks that are down?
I've got all the trucks, but three of them are, are up. And we're getting the fourth one coming back in tomorrow from, from a repaired.
Good.
Bad news on another one that I'll, I'll let Dan know tomorrow that, uh, you get a, what's it gonna cost to get that one repaired? But we're getting them back up again, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Pasqua?
Do we possibly book a vendor with a couple of trucks and just say, every snowstorm you come out? If we end up with extra people, we, great.
I have one right now with one truck. He's got a route that he goes to and I'm using the people, cause we don't have the people, the trucks. So I'm keeping him on one route and that's where he goes to. But he was down, his truck was down, so I lost him for that storm.
So, so maybe a couple. You, you know what I mean? If we just budget for maybe having three private contractors, you know, doing every storm. Now we know that if we are full fleet, great, plus three, fine, we'll get everything done faster, but.
You folks want?
Overbook it.
I'd be happy to do that, but as long as we have the funding there to cover it. I use 10% so far with just three storms. I've used 10% of what the allocated amount was for the contractors I've already spent. And that was only three small storms.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I, I mean, I get the union's position, but if we had some vendors that could work every storm and work our town employees around that and not have burnout and them work in 19 hours, I think we would better utilize our manpower over the length of the storm and beyond.
This is the first year, so you're with a learning curve and if I can get them to commit, I'd be more than happy to utilize.
Yeah, you, you get what I'm saying. I just think it's better utilizing our manpower.
We don't have shifts like the police.
19 hours behind a plow in a snowstorm is probably a liability.
Yes, that's why we give them rest, rest periods, so.
I, I know sometimes we see the highway signs advertising, um, different state anyway, for snow plowing contractors.
We can't get enough of you.
Yeah, I'm, right, anyway.
Yeah, I'll be happy to try. Next season, this season's over with.
Can I ask you how you advertise now? Or how you have advertised?
We haven't, what we've advertised is within the Rhode Island Public Works Association and within the, the local papers. We look at that. Some people give us names. We reach out to contractors that we know that are in the area. They have trucks available that are willing to commit.
Yeah, I think we have to get like a list that we know for next year. We got these three guys and they'll work every snowstorm. They gotta get it in the budget, so let's ask for it in a couple of weeks.
Pete.
Thank you.
Anything else on the, the snowstorm, the fleet there?
Thank you very much.
Oh, Kevin said, you wanna talk about the paving for 25?
Yeah, let's do that. The paving schedule.
Paving schedule is a tentative schedule, cause I don't know what funding I'm gonna get from the town. We went on an assumption, and I have an assumption of what the state would allocate as far as a match of about $250, $50,000. Uh, if we were to put 750 and give us about a million dollars, which is only $200,000 per district. I've got roads that cost me more just to do one road. So I had to cut them up based upon what the current, uh, street scan study that we did. That's how we're basing all of this by, we are having the new ones coming in, in April. They're gonna be doing the new, the new study along with the signs. But we're based this on the, on the old one. Plus we had streets that were scheduled last year, but utilities ended up putting a stop on it so they could do their work. And now that's been done, it's been sitting for six months. We're gonna go and do those roads this year, so that's, that's the delay, so. And that's tentative. That could change. If you give me more money, I'll do more roads, so. State gives us more money, so.
Uh, Councilman Brown?
Glad to see William Street on there.
Yes.
That is absolutely horrible over there, Kevin.
Entire neighborhood there, we got, got tore up because of the gas company. Uh, Maple Dale, Albro, got done with the water company. So we're, you know, we're trying to get it all around and I can't get them all done at once, but.
Um, one question I get asked all the time, Wood Street.
State road.
But didn't we, didn't the funding get awarded for that and we're all set? So what's the timeline?
The gas company's gotta put it, they gotta put gas in, they delayed it back another year. The South Main Street.
All right. I know, it's not you. Um, anything else on paving from Director McGee? Vice President Verducci?
Uh, in the proposed list, what kind of treatments are you figuring for those roads?
Most of them are milling and overlay.
Oh, really? Milling too, okay.
Anything else? Uh, Councilman LeBlanc?
Just wanna say thanks for divvying it up amongst the, uh, the districts. Appreciate that, cause that's not how it was done in the past. So thanks.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, um. Uh, Major Prillo, why don't you finish up your report since we've already kinda got dug into that?
So the last two things I have on there, uh, council asked for job descriptions for a public works superintendent to be basically Kevin's assistant. So we've put that together. Um, we're going to be advertising that job in-house first. The non-union administrative position, but all of the job details are in there. Um, we're thinking about a salary around $80,000. That puts them right above the current foreman in the department. And then secondly, is the deputy finance director's position that we talked about. We scrapped the purchasing agent and the council wanted a deputy finance director. So we have upgraded the job description and the requirements, uh, looking for a deputy finance director. Um, that's most typically gonna have to go outside. There's no internal that has those qualifications and we're looking around a $100,000 salary for that position. That's all I have.
Um, discussion from the council on those two postings? Or those two descriptions? Um, can you just remind us on a timeline for potential posting in the budget? Where it falls in the budget cycle?
Uh, the superintendent, we're gonna put out right away. Uh, we think there's enough money in the current DPW budget due to the vacancies to cover that. Um, deputy finance director, we feel is gonna take a little longer to, to fill. There are several, uh, open jobs for finance currently throughout other municipalities. We think that probably won't be a, probably a May, May or June hire. So we should be able to cover that excess until the budget season.
Well, we can probably post now knowing it's gonna take.
Yeah, definitely wanna post both of them now.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion on these two job postings? All right, thank you. Um, Solicitor Angel, if you wanna finish your report. We left off on introduction of zoning coordinates.
We've got a few things. Um, so you have being introduced, um, for the first reading, quite a raft of, of ordinances, right? Um, I think you've got 10 of them. 12? I think we've got 12 and there's six more, by the way, that have been posted. That will be read, um, in two weeks. All of those, all 18 of them are being commented on by planning tomorrow night. Okay, and I'll get into the whole joint meeting business in a minute. Um, to explain why a couple of. So this council's not done a lot, um, with resolution, with ordinances. And we're gonna do more of it because we need code overhaul in a number of areas. Um, so just so the council is aware as a general rule, your charter requires, and this is a provision that must be followed, that an ordinance must be sponsored by a council person, even a zone change ordinance. Zone changes are the odd exception where it is a direct petition to the council. It's a council matter, direct petition to the council. But all ordinances still have to be sponsored by a council person. It does not mean that the council person is in favor of the ordinance. It means that it gets it on the docket. The next thing that happens is that the clerk has to post that physically for four days before it can make a council document, a docket for a first reading. Uh, then there's a first reading, which does not mean you need to read the whole thing line by line. We'll go through that tonight by way of example. Um, and then you can vote on it at a council meeting after that, so long as there's a public hearing at that council meeting. The, the changes that you see, how zone, how, um, ordinances come about generally is you have department heads that want things done with the code with respect. They're not lawyers, they don't write law. Their changes come over. We take a look at the whole section of the code, um, and take it as an opportunity to tune up that section of the code. Um, I will tell you, we found things like instead of accessory use, accessory use was part of your code, among other things. Not to say that we're, you know, we're all perfect, but there were, uh, wrong citation to state law in some cases. Not related to the changes that were sent over, by the way. Um, and many of these changes are an extension of the zone, uh, the zoning changes that were brought about by the change in state law over a year ago with respect to land use. So you're gonna see quite a bit of ordinance that comes your way. There'll be another raft of those, uh, from planning and zoning, probably in a month or so. But at least for now, you've got almost 20 of them coming your way over the next, over the next month, so. Um, like I said, they, they're gonna be commented on by planning. That's what planning does. Um, they'll make their comments, whatever they may be. Those comments will be packaged up and brought to you, um, by way of a memorandum or the planning director. However they get to you, they get to you. And you'll have the benefit of those. Um, and I will obviously make whatever recommendations I have at the hearing on those matters. So I just wanted to make you aware of the process. You'll see more of this, you'll get used to it. Um, any, any comments on that? Tax stabilization legislation, um, enables a municipality to enter into tax stabilization agreements. Uh, that is of growing importance in Coventry. Um, you've not done a lot of that in the past. In order to be able to do that, you need a local legislative enactment uh, that provides a framework, um, and some guidance as to what you're willing to do or not do. But before you get to do that on a local level, you need state legislation that allows you to do it. We don't have it. We have one piece of enabling legislation at the state level. It happens to be in the wrong section of the Rhode Island general laws and it's very limiting. We do not have the ability to do tax stabilization agreements for mixed use, residential developments and things of that nature. And when you have your larger residential developments, I mean, when you're talking about, you know, hundreds if not thousands of units, uh, and the type of infrastructure that's needed to put the, and I'm not saying you do it, you should have the ability to do it. If the, if the finances work and the tax stabilization agreement makes sense for the town, you know, obviously you need a fiscal note for that. It should be something that you consider, okay? You don't have that tool in your, in your bag.
That's what I was gonna ask, so it's just enabling? It's not for a particular?
You have to do two things. Um, you know, with your permission, you know, and we can just, just do it by voice with respect to the leadership. I'd like permission to draft the state legislation and have it introduced through the leadership. And then have this council pass a resolution to support that. It's, it's enabling legislation. It applies only to this municipality, so it's a local, of local concern. And then following that, we would introduce and pass our own local framework. And all it does, it doesn't mean that you have to accept the tax stabilization agreement, it means you have the right to consider it. As you sit here today, if there were a significant mixed use development of any kind, of any particular size, you do not have an ability to enter into a tax stabilization agreement, and that puts you at a significant disadvantage with development.
Um, any? Yes, Councilman Brown.
We have a tax stabilization right now in town that was given to somebody, correct?
I don't want to get into that.
Okay.
We have stop signs too.
Other comments on this, what's the pleasure of the council?
I don't mean to be glib, Councilman Brown, I, I don't mean to be glib about it, I.
No, understood.
Councilman Capaldi?
I know you're talking about state legis, I mean, state, whatever you just said, tax. I know that Mr. Hallis is back there and we're, we have been talking with the town manager and getting all these other, Councilman LeBlanc, and all these other people trying to get some kind of benefit on property taxes in this town for veterans. And it seemed that we were just going around and around, so I'm asking you, can we do anything? Can you help us? What do we do?
There was, we.
I can't comment on veterans-related. Right now, the, the topic is tax stabilization legislation, for me to talk about a veterans piece is.
There was a meeting that was had between some council members and town staff about next steps on what you're referring to, it's not an item here, but I'll talk to you.
I mean, we, for open meetings concerns, we have to stay to agenda topics, sorry, I'm happy to talk to you offline.
No, that's fine, I just had to bring it up, I didn't know there was a meeting, so, thank you.
Anything else on tax stabilization legislation? If I could, Madam President, I, I need you to ask the council, since it is appropriate for a vote to be taken, that I be authorized to draft some state enabling legislation on this and work with leadership to get it sponsored by our state delegation and introduce.
Do you want a formal motion?
Yes.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move.
Motion from Vice President Verducci. Second by Councilman LeBlanc, any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci? President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
So the next thing I wanted to talk to you about is zone changes. I've sat here now over two years, we've never done a zone change, okay? You, you're going to have a zone change come before you, there's a project that's been proposed, it's sitting before planning, it's on your agenda, it's called the Coventry Center Project. You know, the way these things work, and I, I want you to understand, there are things that get introduced before planning and zoning that, you know, you don't necessarily know about right away. So I wanted to use this as a test case to introduce the concept to you. You don't lose control over a project simply because they're in the pre-application phase and then they need to go to master plan and things like that before planning. Especially when there's a zone change involved, the, the zone change needs to come before you. The zone change comes before you in the form of an ordinance, it has to be a legislative enactment as a law. So that will be drafted and it will come before you. Who drafts it, how it gets drafted, how it gets put together says nothing about the drafter, says nothing about the sponsor, it's just getting that before you. And you do have an opportunity at that time to shape the project. This particular item, there was some confusion about whether there should be a joint meeting with the council. I, I want to clear up joint meetings and I'll, I'll get to that in a brief moment. For a variety of legal process reasons, there is nothing before you. Number one is a council. And number two, you would be prejudging a matter before it comes before you and helping to shape it. Creates all sorts of legal issues that I'm not going to get into in public. So I want to be clear as to why that was done. Same thing with the introduction of the ordinances, the ordinances get introduced, other people make their comments, and then it all comes to you. It also makes for a very efficient process, so. I know there was some confusion about that in the context of a joint meeting, if you have questions, I'm happy to take them. So if I can skip down for a minute, since we are on the topic of joint, of joint meetings, I've taken a pretty hard look at this, I mean, when I first came here, I had seen agendas labeled, you know, joint, joint meeting of the council and so and so, and it was a really funky agenda. I take the position, and it is my guidance to the town council and to the town of Coventry, that joint meetings or workshops of the council are nothing more than a special meeting of the council. It is a council meeting, you are the legislative body in Coventry, it is your agenda. If you're having a joint meeting with someone, then that joint meeting is stated as such under new business. That other body is going to join you, then it is up to them to post their own meeting notice under the OMA. But it is a meeting of the council, they're being invited to join the council, okay? This isn't a cookout among family relatives, right? So I, I just want to be clear about that, I've written some guidance on that, I'm not going to bore you with it, I think I may have passed it out to you. So please take a look at that, if you have questions, you can, you can get back to me. You have one mandated joint meeting a year that you must have, and that is the December revenue meeting with the school department, okay? There's also been a misnomer that I've, I've heard the social media, or I've heard the emails, I've heard a lot of things, that somehow a school committee is a co-equal branch of government, they are not, okay? The State Department of Education does not sit on the dais with Speaker Shikachi, okay? That's not what happens, neither does the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, okay? They can be on an agenda, but you are the legislature, you are the appropriating authority to put things in appropriate context. So that's, that's just an observation. But the format that I am recommending for those meetings is the joint meeting. Now, if you have a workshop, or if you have a joint meeting, joint meetings generally, you may take public, you may take public comment certainly if you choose to. If you're there to work on a particular project, okay, putting ideas together, generally in workshop session, public comment is, is not an agenda item. Because you're not making any final decisions as a council. When you're making decisions as a council, you're going to have public hearings, public comment, that's been the general mode of this council anyway. So I just point that out to you, particularly as you went into budget season and you want to do some workshops on things perhaps separate and apart from budget hearings. Any questions on that? The redevelopment authority. As you know, I am also agency counsel, we appeared here two weeks ago with the chairman to give you a sense of where things stood. That, that proposal from the plan of the professional planner has been reworked according to the comments and input of the agency members, and I'm authorized to tell you this tonight. They're going to consider that tomorrow night as a contract and entering into it, assuming that that goes according to the wishes of the agency members as expressed by them two weeks ago. The chairman of the RDA made you aware of a joint meeting with the council and the agency to make sure that the agency had its sites properly focused on the aim of the ordinance that the council passed and the resolutions relative to the redevelopment of the Johnsons Pond area. And so I have three dates for the experts to come in along with the RDA. The dates that were given to me, one in particular works for the experts, and that kind of drives the bus a little bit. April 3rd, that was a date that I think the council leadership had polled on, so it will be April 3rd at 6:00 PM here. That just happened late this afternoon. We've talked about joint meetings. I had also passed out something to you that was a redraft of the section on public comment on docketed items in public hearings to make it a bit more clear to the public. And an opportunity to really take a look at that, just in the context of how meetings have worked here in the last two years, and the needs of other boards and commissions. It seems that this is a bit clearer to the public. I know that I had a specific conversation with Councilman LeBlanc at one point, and he said, this, this public hearing thing just seems to hang here. I think we've cleaned that up a bit, and I'm recommending that that be used on the docket from this point forward as a substitution for the language that's presently there, it does not change any of the access by Zoom or YouTube or any of that stuff. It just changes the layout of the agenda, so it's a bit more clear to the public, certainly.
If I could pause this for a brief commercial, we actually got, I think, three or four submitted submissions of written testimony. Could I just get a motion to accept those into the record for public comment, please?
Make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua.
A second.
By Councilman Capaldi, any discussion?
I could, you should identify who they're from.
Do you have those with you? From Jerry Narcoitz, Gino Riccio, and Stacy Nichols. Did it go to the clerk?
Let me see, yeah, I think we all got it, I received.
From last week?
Yeah, I got it yesterday from Bob Brennan. It, it went to everybody but the clerk, went to all, all council members. I can read it real quick.
If I could just reference what it is, we'll have it printed and made part of the record, I got the same thing, I think.
Yeah, uh, no.
I didn't get that.
CC'd on it.
Oh, okay.
So he wanted clarification on one of the ordinances, the change that takes away the subject to approval of town council, to respect the planning commission shall have the authority to adopt, modify, and amend rules and regulations governing the plating and other subdivisions of land.
I do have that.
Okay.
We can forward that and make it posthumously part of the record.
I, I don't have that. I'll forward that one to you, any other discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc? Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And just as it's stated in this redrafted section, the whole point of the submission of written testimony is, A, for legislative efficiency, B, it has the same weight as if the people testified live, you know, it gives them an ability, another ability to get something to you and get it as made part of the record. But respectfully, I say to the council, as I have to other groups, when somebody offers written testimony, you want to be careful that they don't stand here and read their written testimony. If they have something different to add, let them add something different, otherwise you've got the written testimony, that's the whole point of it. Just another.
Is this sheet that you passed out, is that for, that's only docketed items, we're not making any changes to public, written?
No, we're not, we're not making changes to the undocketed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? So you have, since we're out of order, we've, we've got, you've got one resolution in particular, which is the one concerning traffic control devices, as you know, we're curing a problem, we talked about this probably about three or four weeks ago, that we really didn't have appropriate legislation with respect to legitimizing traffic control devices. The resolution more or less speaks for itself. We have, we have adopted the definitions in the municipal. Your traffic code, when the, when the ordinance scheme is done, will certainly go further than this, I spoke with the chief about it, he has no objection to this. This will allow his folks to resume what they have ordinarily done in the past. That practice was suspended based upon some of my comments. Again, just the hole that we're trying to fix, that's all it is. I rec, I would recommend respectfully that the council gives consideration to passage of this, I won't speak for the chief, but I can't imagine he'd object. Being able to write tickets again. Questions on that? Okay, I don't have anything else.
Just to clarify, so going back to the safety committee, hearing the complaints, making decisions, and moving forward without the council dissipating in that process?
What process, for what?
All stop signs, no parking signs, all that stuff? Is that the process we're going back to?
No, ju, just to be clear, the past practice here had been to have a traffic safety committee not comprised of council members. Making decisions on where stop signs go and placing them. There's a disconnect between what goes on with that committee, which by the way, is a proper function of the committee, I mean, they, who better to decide where traffic control devices go than the professionals who know all about them? Councilperson could stand up and say, hey, I want to see a stop sign on this street. And the chief of police and whoever else may get involved and say, that's a horrible idea, and here are all the reasons why, and you'll get a recommendation from the traffic committee on that. Going forward, it's the goal that any traffic control device, whether it's a stop sign, whether it's a crosswalk, whether it's a flashing line, whatever the case may be, it will come before the council to be enacted as part of the code, as an ordinance. Now, this legitimizes everything that's presently in place.
Councilman Pasqua?
Do we make a resolution right now to pass this?
Yeah, we can go to the resolution now if you'd like.
So make a motion to approve 25-18?
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilman Brown, discussion on the resolution? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Copley?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
I don't have anything else for now.
All right, thank you. We'll finish up resolutions, item C 2025-16 to approve the allocation of school impact fees in the amount of $8,490 for Allen Sean Feinstein Middle School to replace two Armstrong pumps, this is on page 34 in your packet, do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion from Vice President Verducci.
A second.
Second from Councilman Capaldi, discussion on the resolution.
So the school needs to replace these two pumps at that cost, $8,490, they currently have $120,000 balance in their impact fee.
They currently have $120,000 balance in their impact fee account.
Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Capaldi. Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Yes.
Councilmember Copley.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-17 to support House Bill H5193 relating to health and safety, Office of State Fire Marshal. Registrants of electric and hybrid motor vehicles can request stickers to affix to enclosures housing such vehicles to promote first responder safety in relation to electrical fires. This is pages 35 to 36 in your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Pasqua, discussion. I believe this was the, the bill, Councilman LeBlanc, you mentioned at the last council meeting. Okay. Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Pasqua. Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Yes.
Councilmember Copley.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-19 urging the Rhode Island General Assembly to enact legislation enhancing school districts/departments' accountability to city and town councils for management of their fiscal matters. This is pages 39 to 41 in our packets. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I motion.
Motion by Councilman Capaldi.
Second.
Second by Vice President Verducci, discussion. So let me go to the page in the packet. So just a bit of an introduction on this one, and my co-sponsors can feel free to jump in on this. So obviously, there were, there's been a lot of press and discussion around Warwick, the city of Warwick also facing a deficit with their school department. The mayor's office there has legislation pending that's actually going to the House floor this week, I think, to create a special commission to dive into the school department's budget and then provide them, the school committee recommendations. And then from there, the school committee can either say, yeah, we'll take those recommendations, or they can just say, go pound sand. There had been some folks that had reached out to me and said, why aren't we doing this? In my opinion, it lacks teeth. And so then there was conversation about, how do we, how do we add a mechanism that would be more long-lasting and help structurally over time? So that's how you have the resolution before you. In summary, this is looking to create a reciprocal mechanism to the Corullo action currently that school departments are allowed to do. And for those who don't know, it allows school departments to sue the municipality that they receive local aid from if they believe that they should get more money. So right now, as it stands, and it says this in the resolution, towns are responsible for providing funding to school departments of local appropriation. That includes a maintenance of effort, that includes their debt service payments on capital projects, that includes pension and retirement contribution payments, school building maintenance fund payments, or minimum maintenance requirement, and annual payments, in our case, to a corrective action plan. So we're held liable for their fiscal health, and yet we have no ability to provide checks and balances on how that money is spent. In state law, it's stated that the school department and the, by virtue of the school committee, is the one that has control over how that allocation ultimately is spent. This is something that's, the deficits are popping up all over the state at this point. I know we're not alone, but ours in a structural nature is significant. So that's the impetus for what's in front of you. I've already had general assembly members reach out to me with interest in sponsoring this for the community, which is where this would go next in terms of distribution, as it states toward the end of this resolution in item four, starting on line 98. And at this point, I will toss it over to co-sponsors if they'd like to add anything on this. Councilman LeBlanc.
Couldn't have said it better. I appreciate the high-level overview there. I personally have received many calls saying, how come this school can spend $5.8 million more than, you know, they were budgeted, and how come you're not doing anything about it? I tried calling the auditor general, had a conversation with him, actually have had multiple conversations with him. I asked him, I said, when is the state going to come in and do something? And he legitimately said, there's nothing in state law currently that allows the town council to hold the, the school committee accountable. So then I called, well, I got a letter from the Speaker of the House, I reached out to him, I asked him the exact same question. I said, you know, our school committee has spent an enormous amount of money over their budget, what can, what can we do? And he said, get with your local Coventry delegation and create a legislation to do something because there's legitimately no teeth currently for you. So as President Lima stated, this is something, I cannot believe we're in 2025 and we're actually proposing this. I don't know how something hasn't been proposed before this. There's many towns and cities that have some deficits, actually smaller than ours, and the school committees are actually closing down some schools to help fund that deficit. To this, to this day, I actually don't even know how we're digging out of this hole. I keep on asking the question. I was told that some people got let go, but then I was told that the majority of them were rehired. So I don't know how we're digging ourselves out of this hole right now. So I thought that how we're handling this, where the town can actually take over the school's finances, we can get them back on the right track, make sure that we have a deficit production plan that's actually going to come to fruition, and then we can move forward and give the finances back at that point in time. So I fully support this, and that's why.
Yeah, I won't repeat what's been said, but just to let everyone know, you know, this isn't something we took lately as a political posturing mechanism. This is a pragmatic attempt to get budgets under control. As my colleagues have outlined, we don't have a lot of options, the state included. So this is our attempt to get some of that control back to answer our constituents when they say, as Councilman LeBlanc said, how can you continue to let this happen? Well, a lot of circumstances, we can't. I'd also like to say, we still don't know how that side of the deficit is being made up. There has been some political posturing on that, you know, but what we really need to do is, is get in there and solve this problem. There's nothing left to do but to work. If that can't happen, and it's not happening from what we've seen, we need a tool like this to be able to speed that process up, because deficits will only keep growing. So I was a little disappointed tonight, we didn't get the audit done, because that was one of the hangups we had, was we couldn't develop the new plan without the final audit number. I find that a shaky argument, but at this point, we just want to get that final number identified so we can begin the budget solve. So I appreciate my colleagues for helping get this going.
Councilman Pasqua.
Just want to extend my gratitude to President Lima, Vice President Verducci, and Councilman LeBlanc for working on this. This is, this is good stuff, and I'm going to support it.
Councilman Brown.
More of a question, I do agree with this 100%. Why not it being a local issue to Coventry, why are we making it statewide?
So I'm glad you asked that. I actually did have the delegation tell me that when they take this and go to write it as a bill, they're going to make it a Coventry bill, because they said that's more likely to get passed. And they, and they said, once other communities see, and one community get it passed, it'll end up becoming a snowball effect. And then eventually, you'd have that. But that's a very good question, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Councilman Capaldi.
Since, since I was appointed almost a year ago, I never understood this. And it was one of the questions I've asked all you guys, why do we not have oversight of the biggest department that has the biggest budget in our town? It doesn't make sense. It was hurting my head, doesn't make sense. We spoke about it a lot. VP JP and I have spoke about it a lot. So I am so happy about this, this ordinance, and I thoroughly support it.
Solicitor Angel.
As the council knows, I have advised on this issue. I'm very familiar with the Corullo Act, I'm very familiar with state budget commissions. You don't want a state budget commission, nor do you want a school department budget commission. The day after the Warwick bill came out with respect to the Warwick problem, I advised this council that it, first of all, it doesn't apply to you given how their deficit arose, and second of all, it's, it's a waste of time. This concept provides you with more teeth, Coventry-specific solution, by the way, very analogous to the tax stabilization legislation. Every city and town who has one has pretty much the same thing that applies to them in the same section of the Rhode Island general law. If anybody else wants one, they can get one in their name too. But at least you'll have something in your name. I'm happy to work with the state delegation to put together a piece of legislation that has some hope of passing.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Yes.
Councilmember Copley.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Councilwoman Capaldi, I don't know if you want to talk about your first bullet there briefly on your Councilwoman Communications, communication and updates for residents from the town.
Yeah, sure. There's so much miscommunication that we see going on around social media. We've heard it a lot today. The council will stand up and, you know, over and over again, and state a fact, and then citizens don't hear it, they don't understand it, they want to make up their own truths about it. I just want to have what happens in this town, through the town manager, kind of give a briefing of, every month of what happens, Cliff Note version. I want to be transparent, I want this council and what we do as council members, I want the citizens to know exactly what happens and when it happens. I think that people just kind of fly by the seat of their pants and they just make up stuff, or they hear a little nugget of truth and then they go run with it. We all know that's social media, we get it. But I want to, I want to create this source of truth. I want the source of truth to be on our website, not on social media. They go to our website to find the source of truth of what's going on. So if we can find a process, maybe every month, we post what has happened this month for the town, I think that'd be a great thing. And if, I don't know how we can do it, if we have it in like a Q and A format, so people can search with the subject matter they're looking for, but the whole idea is to have one place that our citizens can go to, rather than social media, and get the source of truth of what the heck's happening in this town. What do you guys think? I'd love to hear your thoughts.
What I would recommend is, I think you and Dan should meet one-on-one, flesh out some potential ideas and bring it to the council, see if they have ideas of how we want to format it, what would be in that update. Is it a matter of taking the memo that the town manager gives to the council on town updates and making that more of a public document? I think that would be helpful, is if we could get some ideas. I think it's always wanting to think about what, you know, put so many things in that.
Sure, I wish his advice to do it this way, that's why I did it.
That's fine. So if you could connect with Elisa, maybe set up a call or a meeting, so we can get some ideas. Thank you very much. Go back up. Oh, we've got public comment for undocketed items? Yeah, I'll go back up to the top. I just, I know there's some folks who are probably waiting for public comment.
Did I say my name again?
Yes, please.
Mark Hallis, 35 Chandler Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island. I'm here tonight to address an issue that strikes at the core of ethical governance and public trust, the financial relationship between the town solicitor and members of the town council. Specifically, I'm referring to campaign donations made by the town solicitor to city members of council members. This practice is not just inappropriate, it raises serious concerns about conflicts of interest and the integrity of our local government. The town solicitor is not just another resident or business owner making a political contribution, he is a paid legal representative of this town, responsible for providing impartial legal advice to the council and serving the best interests of the community as a whole. When the solicitor donates to council members' campaigns, it calls into question whether legal decisions and recommendations are being influenced by personal, political relationships rather than law and the town's best interests. Even the perception of favoritism or undue influence erodes public confidence in this council's ability to govern fairly and transparently. To the members of the council who receive donations from the solicitor, I urge you to do the right thing, return them. Show the residents of Coventry that you are committed to ethical leadership and that your decisions are made independently, free from any financial entanglements with those who serve in official town positions. And to the solicitor, I respectfully ask you to refrain from making such contributions in the future. Your role is to serve this town impartially, not to engage the political process in a way that compromises or appears to compromise your neutrality. The residents of Coventry deserve a government that operates with integrity, free from any conflicts, real or perceived. It's time to reserve that trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public, public comment, undocketed items? Just make sure the mic's on, state your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Lamoy, 34 Island Drive, President Johnsons Pond Civic Association. So I want to thank the council for the support and consideration of the funding of the treatment of the, excuse me, the aquatic invasive species, otherwise known as weeds. I just want to add one quick comment to, it goes far beyond just the weeds being a detriment to recreation and swimming, but it's also a responsible environmental, as environmental stewards, it's a responsible environmental thing to do. The aquatic invasive species are just that, they're invasive, they just choke out the water, they suck up and choke out all the dissolved oxygen in the water, so that all the species that live in there, fish, amphibians, clams, mussels, all rely on dissolved oxygen to live. We have witnessed the last four years what, what occurred when the water levels were low, we weren't allowed to treat for the weed treatment, and the dissolved oxygen plummeted, and we got, for the first time in documented history on Johnsons Pond, harmful algae booms, which are very toxic to humans and pets. Just again, we want to thank you for your support and consideration in that funding. The second thing I want to just comment on is I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Pasqua's explanation of historical water levels in Johnsons Pond. I can 100% guarantee you that if the levels that are used right now in that lease, or from that lease, we will be in the same exact boat, or if not worse case, based on weather conditions, worst case could occur than when we were with social holdings. I went to every single superior court session for the last three years, sat in front of every single judge, each and every time, social holdings won based upon the fact that they were in compliance with the lease, as far as water levels go, they were in compliance with the lease. Therefore, what we suffered for the last four years was very, very low water levels. I think, Councilmember Capaldi, you stated that, you know, where's that disconnect with DEM? Well, that's a very good question, because I'm asking myself that same thing tonight. I don't understand why DEM did not come to the Civic Association. So I've lived on that pond since 1977. I can tell you for a fact that that water level was almost always near full, starting in April, starting at the beginning of April. So I can say whatever I want, but we can back it up with data. So I can say whatever I want, but we can back it up with data. DEM never received the weekly reports from the Quinick Reservoir, the previous owner of Quinick Reservoir Company. The Town of Coventry never received the weekly reports from Quinick Reservoir, and GZA associates never received the weekly reports on those levels whatsoever. The only people that received the weekly reports from Quinick Reservoir for years and years and years were the Civic Association. We have that data, we have gone to great lengths, our Water Affairs Chairman has gone to great lengths to plot all that data, come up with the averages. I personally sat and was part of crafting the state legislation along with our lawyer, along with our state delegation on both the House side and the Senate side, and we crafted the language of that legislation, worked very hard on it to emphasize historical water levels. Flow is a little bit independent of that and is weather-related. If you think of that dam not being there, not existing, there's two rivers that come in, Flat River and Big River. Whatever is coming in is going to flow out and form the south branch of the Patuxet River. I also wear another hat as I sit on the board of the Patuxet River Authority, it's a state authority. Our position on the river authority is, whatever flows, flows. We even got an opinion letter from a lake and river scientist, well-known state lake and river scientist, that states that it's more detrimental to the river in these massive flow swings, you know, during the spring and summer. A steadier flow is much better for the river, the health, the species, the amphibians, et cetera. Again, that disconnect between DEM and Mr. Choppy, whom I sat in many meetings with face-to-face, along with Director Terry Gray, where we presented the historical data to them when they were crafting this legislation. I think Solicitor Angel said previously that you have stop signs in town, well, the council may not know, think best practice is to put a stop sign, so what do you do? You ask the professionals. I'm not sure why the Civic Association wasn't asked by DEM, or GZA for that matter. Again, we have that data, and the data is traceable and verifiable, and we would like to be given the opportunity, and I don't know what that vehicle is going to be, through the council, to get that information to GZA associates and in front of Mr. Choppy, again, to remind Mr. Choppy of all the data we've already presented to him that he seems to have forgotten. Thank you for your time and consideration, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lemoy.
Does the council have any questions? No matter. Thank you.
Any other members of the public in chambers? Just make sure the microphone is on and state your name and address for the record.
Gino Riccio, 85 Honor Road. So I gave you guys the documentation, a couple of members are familiar what I've been going through for four years. Just so you'll understand, these are all the emails I sent, there's tons of them. It started with Ms. Lima there, and I was trying, what happened was, they put the sewers on Honor Road in 2017. So what they did is, on the stretch of my road, where Tyoga Avenue starts onto Honor Road, up to the causeway, just before Lake Tyoga, they couldn't put the sewer covers in the middle of the road, which is usually where they would put them, so cars don't run over them, because the water lines are in the middle of the road there. So the guy who engineered it, put them where you have the white line that's near the sidewalk and the yellow line, so he put it right in the middle. That way there, when the car goes over it, it goes under the car and the tires don't hit it, so it avoids the sound. So then, four years later, the town decides to put in a Mickey Mouse bike lane. When they put in the bike lane, it moved the lines over, so now the line borders the sewer cover, so now you've got the right tire of every car just hitting them. We're talking about 10 to 15 covers all the way down, and this is what you get. I get this all the time in my house, it comes into my house, it comes through the pipes because of the low frequency we're talking about, like high frequencies, a car's going by, that doesn't bother you, but as you guys know, being firefighters, you know the ambulance has that woo-woo, that's the kind of sound we deal with. And at the beginning, I thought it was the covers, but they weren't, so they were trying to put gaskets, but gaskets don't work. So what I was asking them to do is remove that bike lane and put the lanes back the way they were, to restripe the lane. The road is basically, I think, 1.2 miles long all the way up, and they got a quote, I believe, for $50,000 to redo it, but what I'm asking for is about 4/10 of a mile, and I've heard people say, you can't, you've got to do the whole road. The other side of the road has bike lane, then they have parking, then they continue the bike lane again, and I don't see why they can't just restripe my part of the road. So they would move the white over to the side and move the center lane back where it was, so the tires won't hit it. I got a petition, I got 25 people all the way down, I got some old, seriously old people sick on the road that they can't take the sound, they said, please, could you do something for us? And I'm a psychiatric nurse for a living, so I'm already stressed out, and I've got a wife that's totally disabled, and she's always crying because she said she can't sleep at night, and I'm so stressed out. It's been four years and I've gotten nothing from this. I need this done, we are desperate on that road, you know, and it seems like nobody's, you know, I've had help from a couple of council members, I even had one from, it's not even my district, who tried to help me, and we need this, we really need this done. It's really hot on everybody on the street. Thank you, is any questions?
Manager Perlo, I'd request that this be an item on the March 11th agenda with all of the quote information and the length of the restriping and the area where it would be restripped, for the entire council to have all of the backstory on this and the pricing that's been done, in addition to communication we've received from DOT on the ability to restripe.
So just for everyone else, this is an area that we'll be looking to study, I'm guessing, sooner rather than later, for other development? Okay, okay. In that case then, do we know if in the past, did we try to look at only doing a portion of the road? Can that, is that possible, Dan?
The issue you have sometimes with public comment on undocketed items is that a member of the public brings up an issue before the council that is not specifically listed on the docket as an agenda item. As a result of that, when there's discussion on that issue, you are having a meeting within a meeting on an unadvertised item. That's the law, that's what the Attorney General has opined, which is why, in this case, the council president has said, get all the information together and put it on as an agenda item. But just to be clear, I'm not trying to be the Grinch when it comes to council members discussing things under undocketed items, but when we start to have these discussions about matters that aren't listed on an agenda, that's problematic and it's actionable and the town can be fined.
Even if it's not something that I put in the letter? If I asked for something like that? Yeah.
If it's not on the agenda, the council cannot have a discussion on it.
So it's not on the agenda yet because we just, I just brought it up, in other words? Thank you, okay.
Any other members of the public in council chambers, public comment on undocketed items, those on, aren't on the agenda?
Ross Pelletier, 44 Allison Avenue. I want to thank the Parks and Rec Director, whatever, I forget his name, it was Svetke. I think he's doing a great job, my daughter's going to look forward to those new parks, she loves one that they already have. Another thing my daughter is going to love is water in Johnson's Pond. I grew up on the pond, and starting in May, to bring it up is way too late, it's never been that late, it's always been usable early April. I mean, I've been out there waterskiing with ice, and bringing it up in May, not only will it shorten our season, but the weeds are already growing at that point. You guys are allocating $55,000 to various lakes, thank you, or haven't yet, but looks like you're going to, 35 to the pond, thank you for that, but we'll be just doing that over and over and over again, and it'll be on the residents to pay for it, because obviously you guys made it clear that you can't pay for it every year, which we don't expect you to. If you keep the water low till the beginning of May, the weeds are going to start to grow, they're going to grow like weeds, there's a saying about that, weeds grow quick. The light will reach down, I think it's eight feet or so, in Johnson's Pond. Anything over that, where the light doesn't hit, the weeds don't grow. So by keeping the water down three feet and the weeds are starting to grow, you're reaching a whole other surface of the bottom of the pond. So then the weeds start growing up as the water goes up, and now that three-foot area what was 11 feet before and didn't have weeds now has weeds. So it's another thing to consider when you're putting this whole schedule together, so my opinion, pond should come up earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand, public comment on undocketed items only, those items not on our agenda this evening. Going once, twice, three times, public comment is now closed. And we're going to jump back up to appointments. We are looking to stand up this evening, the council's Finance Committee and Safety Services and License Committee. Folks will remember, in our council rules on page, starting on page four, section four, we've created two standing committees. Each committee will have four members of the council. I've communicated with the council vice president on this, he will be serving as a voting member on one of these committees, and I, as council president, will sit as ex officio on both, as a non-voting member. In this section, if you want to look back, it outlines what matters will go before these committees, in particular, and how things will be referred to these committees from the council. So that's on page four and five of our council rules, section four. So at this point, I'll solicit interest for the Finance Committee from council members. Councilman Blank?
I certainly would be interested in serving on the Finance Committee. One thing I did want to state, though, I think there's been some dialogue on what a true finance committee should be made up of, I think there's various different opinions on that. I recall, I think it was 2019, maybe, it was a year in which the budget kept on getting rejected by the taxpayers, and the former town manager at the time discussed a Citizens' Advisory Committee to try to get citizens to be a part of a group that looks at our finances, looks at the budget, tries to help the town, steer the town, maybe that had accounting or finance backgrounds, and at the time, I think Mr. Wazika had told me that there were about 19 applications, so there was definitely interest. So I would also prefer, I don't know, obviously we're trying to stand up this one with just council members, but maybe in the future, we consider maybe a Citizens Advisory Committee or another committee where there's actual taxpayers that have that type of background that could also help us with our finances, because there's other towns, like Barrington is an example, where they have a finance committee made up of actual taxpayers, not just their council members.
Yeah, that's in, they have the budget, or the Committee on Appropriations.
Correct, correct, whatever name they want to use, but yeah, it's very similar. But I'm glad that we're at least standing up something, so, but I certainly would be interested.
Thank you. Councilman Coppely?
I'd be interested in that too, to be on the Finance Committee, and I echo Councilman LeBlanc's thoughts on the Finance Committee. I even brought my Palm Card because that's something I campaigned on as a creative financial committee back in 2024. When I was campaigning, there's a lot of people who want to serve on committees because they don't have the time to become a council member. They have families, they have jobs, sometimes two jobs, young kids, but they do have a lot of time to serve on a committee, and I think that would be a great addition to help this town out.
Yeah, actually, I've seen it in multiple budgets, there's been an open line, I think it's been $0 for the Citizens Advisory Committee, it may have gotten a stipend in the past, I don't know, but if someone wants to do the legwork to see if that exists in the charter or there was a resolution, I'm happy to hear more about it. So we have Councilman LeBlanc, Councilman Coppely for Finance, other interests in, Vice President Verducci?
Yeah, just want to echo the statements here and also throw my hat in the ring for Finance Committee, thank you.
So I moved all three that were nominated or interested in that committee, I nominate them to be on that committee. Second.
Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Pasqua, for those nominations for Finance Committee, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Coppely?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And then we have Safety Services and Licenses, again, this is another committee that will be referred to and dig into the license process and also the other safety service decisions that'll come before the council, as outlined in council rules. Councilman Capaldi?
I'm going to follow, Councilman Coppely over there on what he ran for. I also ran for the small businesses and also safety of our community, so I think I'd be great for this committee because these things are near and dear to my heart.
Councilman Pasqua?
I'm interested. Get out.
Process of elimination.
I'll make a motion for those three council members that just indicated interest to this committee.
I'll second.
A motion and second on the slate for Safety Services and Licenses, any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Coppely?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
I missed one meeting, it was just one.
All right, and now we go to the first reading of our dozen ordinances. Again, as Mr. Angel has stated, the first reading is after it's been advertised, posted. We don't actually read all of them in full length, these will, at their second hearing, will be up for public hearing for the public to make comment. This is the first introduction. Anything to add? We don't have to do anything? Nope. Okay. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the following. Closed session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, section 42-46-5A2 for litigation matters re Nicholas C. Cambio Trustee and others, V. Commerce Park Realty LLC. Closed session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, section 42-46-5A2 for litigation matters re Town of Coventry Notice of Violation Dam Number 176. Closed session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, section 42-46-5A2 for litigation matters Social Holdings LLC, V. Town of Coventry, Town of Coventry V. Social Holdings, Terrence Gray in his capacity as Director, Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, V. Town of Coventry, and executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, section 42-46-5A2 for litigation matters related to a discussion of prospective litigation to be initiated against the town. Do I hear a motion?
Make it.
Motion by Councilman Blank?
A second.
Second by Councilman Capaldi, any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilmember Coppely?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes. Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Could I take a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilman LeBlanc. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc. Councilmember Copley.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Could I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi. Councilmember LeBlanc. Councilmember Copley.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Members of the public, the council met in executive session to discuss items A, B, C, and D listed on our agenda. A discussion was had, no votes were taken. And at this time, I will take a motion to adjourn at 10:30 in three seconds.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Copley, second by Councilwoman Capaldi.